I'm going to call back into order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, May 28, We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to just remind and request that people silence their cellphones if they have them, and we have, the meeting is being recorded as well. If the committee would allow, I'd like to take a couple of things out of order tonight, mostly because we have a large crowd. So, I'd like to do some recognition of our students before we do public comment, and I will introduce now Dr. Sciarala.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize, I think, our last group for this year, other than perhaps some athletes that we might bring in in June, but I'm not sure. So, I have several groups this evening, I'm just, does someone have the, you have them stand? Okay. So, the first group, I have the advisor here, Peter Mafion for DECA. Peter, he's going to help out. We had a group of, how many go to Nationals?
Eleven.
Eleven students went to Nationals, and we have three students being recognized this evening for their, one is for leadership and the other two are for placing in the top ten. So, I just wanted to let you know that there were eighteen thousand students at this DECA National Competition, and we had two students finish in the top ten in two of the categories. It's pretty impressive, and we really wanted to recognize them. So, our first student is Basil Vergodis, who finished ninth in Principles of Marketing. And then we have Celia DeSalvo, who finished fifth place in Entrepreneurship Franchise Written, and she is our first ever written finalist. And both of these kids, Celia? Congratulations. Both of them are two of twenty-five finalists from Massachusetts, so I'm pretty proud of our kids for being in the top group of eighteen thousand and being two of twenty-five from Massachusetts. And we also have a student who was selected as an Emerging Leader, and that's Alyssa Lash. Thank you. The next group of recognitions is our Robotics Team, which you may remember, you gave permission to go to the World Championships in Louisville, Kentucky, where they held their own, competing against the best in the world and mostly the United States. So, we have a number of them with us tonight. Dimitri Brakos. Congratulations. John Ferris. Connor Ford. Terry Hurst, who is at the Spring Concert, so he will not be getting his award. Josh Howell, who could not make it this evening, I don't think, did he get here? No. Okay. Injuk John? Hopefully he got that close. Congratulations. Tej Shit. Andrew Spitzer. And Elliot Thomas. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Delimpit, who went fifteen hours on a bus to Kentucky and back with the team, so I want to make sure we thank them.
I told, I told the team recently, I said, "I finally figured out what that experience was like for me. It was like being a substitute for five days in a subject you know nothing about." It was a great experience, though, and they did a wonderful job.
I also had wanted to recognize our concert choir and Scarlet and Black singers this evening, so I had invited the officers and Ms. Durk, Mrs. Durkin, however, they're performing. So, I'm just going to read their names, I've got their certificates. The officers are Tatiana Carrillo, Jessica Carroll, Brooke Holland, Hannah Hodzinski, Gabrielle Hupaya, and Anastasia San Germano. They were invited to Carnegie Hall to perform for the second time in four years. So, I do want to recognize our outstanding chorus and their continuing outstanding performances that gets them invited to very prestigious venues to perform. Next, I have a very, it's a first for us, it's a very prestigious award, the Princeton Prize. Princeton University sponsors an annual awards program for high school students. The Princeton Prize in Race Relations was created to identify and commend young people who are working to increase understanding and mutual respect among all races. I am very proud to have one of our students. Ayana Albertini Florent is one of twenty-seven students chosen from across the United States to receive this award, which also carries a one thousand dollar scholarship. Ayana? She told me she was coming. She'll also be at Awards Night next week. The North Shore Chamber of Commerce honors scholars for 2015. We had eighteen students qualify for this award, and they were invited to a dinner two weeks ago. It is the top five percent of the graduating class from thirty-nine local public and private high schools. It's a huge dinner held at what used to be the Ferncroft in Danvers. So, I know I have a number of them here this evening. Let me get the list. Rachel Arbo? Did she make it? Okay. I know Nicole's not coming. Maura Barry? No, Maura, she said she was coming. Kyra Brown? Jake Chaff? No, Jake. Brian Davis? Nope. Ophelia is at the concert. Alex Gamble? Hmm? Brooke is at the concert, Brooke Holland. Christina Young? Okay. Yuri's at the concert. Eric Close is at the concert. Erin McKenna? Yay! Olivia Spox? Nope. Sarah Boziolis? Carolyn Jay. Yay, I know Carolyn, yes. Carolyn is also the Saludatorium for the Class of 2015, so congratulations on that, Carolyn. And Madison Cool. Maddie? Maddie Cool is the Valedictorian for the Class of 2015. And the last award that I have in my hand, Brian's not here, is for the North Andover Junior Poet Laureate, and this is going to go to Abby Corales.
Abby is the second Junior Poet Laureate for the town of North Andover. I'd like to invite Karen Klein up to tell us about Abby and how this came about, and Abby's going to read her poem.
We have had a Junior Poet Laureate since last year, and we had two people last year, we had Virginia Lazon, and Ben Langton was the Assistant Poet Laureate. We are doing a lot of work, so we need two, if we can have them. But we have one this year, and it's wonderful to have Abby. She's very dedicated, and she's very talented, and not in just poetry, but also in sports, and I'm sure in school also. So, if you would like to read your, your real quick poem, and it's called, I believe, March Madness? Yes, thank you.
So, my poem is called March Madness. March Madness is about to begin, fill out the brackets, see who will win. Will it be Kentucky, Duke, or Notre Dame? Once in the tournament, it's anyone's game. The Sweet Sixteen is where you'll want to be, to see your team play and win with glee. Next is the final eight, most teams usually play great. The final four is the beginning of the end, the national championship is right around the bend. The last two teams battle it out, win or lose, you'll scream and shout.
I also have our two Student Council Officers to just give you their briefing on their attendance at the conference you allowed them to go to. I have Jamie and Mia here.
Hi, I'm Jamie.
And I'm Mia.
So, in March, we went to Hyannis, and we were among a bunch of different student councils from across the state, and we were able to listen to two very incredible keynote speakers that were like motivational speakers, and they both talked about inclusion and love and getting like the student body to be empowered and reach their full potential. And we also attended several workshops to build our own skills, which...
Yeah, so, a lot of the workshops were run by either Student Council Advisors, there's also the opportunity to sit down with the keynote speakers that Jamie talked about, and that was a really great opportunity to build our leadership skills and just get different things that we could bring back to our own council. We also met with other students who were running their own workshops, and they had their own team-building activities or leadership activities that really helped us get ideas for the coming year and just really build ourselves as leaders. So, overall, it was a really incredible experience, and we're really happy that we were allowed to go, and we hope to return next year and just keep building our Student Council up to be bigger and better than ever. Thank you.
And last, I did want to introduce the two new student representatives for the School Committee for next year. We have Matt Wolfenden from the Class of 2016 and Courtney Trong from the Class of 2017. So, they are joining Nicole this evening. I think Nick is at La Crosse, because they're getting ready for the tournament, so just wanted you to meet them.
Before we go on to public comment, I just wanted to make a quick note that Mr. Brian Gross isn't here tonight. He had a business conflict, but he did give me something that he wanted to read, and so I'd like to do that before we started public comment. Good evening, it saddens me not to be able to participate in tonight's meeting, however, our attempts to reschedule this meeting, when all would be in attendance, was unsuccessful late last week. With Monday being Memorial Day holiday, there was an insufficient time to post, which would have allowed him to participate remotely, as he is currently out of town on business. I can assure you that I am watching the live NACAM stream. Hi, Brian. I do want to make a statement regarding the Agenda Item 11E under New Business. This item addresses a request to open the Dialogue for the Naming of a School Facility. As you may recall, the School Committee recently adopted policy to provide this framework. This was done to enable for such a request to be brought forward in a thoughtful and respectful manner. I appreciate the scores of emails from members of the community, athletics, and town community, each highlighting why the naming process should be opened and proposing a specific name. For the record, I am in full support of the request to open the naming of an existing facility process, FF and FFR, and in doing so, I expect the School Committee to want to continue to hear from members of the school and town community, including school administrators, teachers, students, residents, and parents, as we, as well as specific proposals for how and when the naming should be memorialized. I look forward to continuing the deliberations in person at our next meeting and future scheduled meetings. So, Mr. Gross just requested that I read that, so I just wanted to do that and explain why he was not here tonight. So, we will now open it for public comments, for Agenda Items only.
Good evening. Barbara Whitten, 696 Osgood Street. I'm here to represent, I'm here to represent two different groups. First, I'm here to represent the North Andover Parent Advisory Committee, or PAC as we're called, and speak about the agenda, on the agenda tonight of naming the North Andover High School track, which is listed under New Business. I serve as Treasurer of the Board. I have tonight with me Maureen Stott, who is here in the back, as well as Diane Stevens and Wendy Zimmerman. Our co-president was unable to make it tonight. First, I want to thank the Committee for putting this on the agenda. It's a very important issue to this community. And I also want to thank you for including the PAC in the process by providing us with a copy of Mr. Nugent's proposal. The role of the PAC is to provide an open forum for parents and administrators to discuss issues, review goals, and promote a positive atmosphere of cooperation at the high school. Therefore, we feel this process to name the high school track should be open to all for discussion, and the decision should be made based on a joint consensus by the community at large. A yes vote by the Committee tonight will allow this to happen. Since the proposal affects an athletic facility, the PAC felt it was important to share the proposal with the North Andover Athletic Association, also known as the NAAA, and I believe they have members here tonight. I'd also like to speak as a former member of the North Andover School Committee and a parent of a high school student and a member of the North Andover Track. Naming a facility is an important decision for the School Committee to make and not one to be taken lightly or one to shy away from. It is an opportunity to recognize into perpetuity someone who has served as an inspiration to the students, the alumni, the faculty, and the parents of North Andover High School. Having a facility named after someone is a great honor. This honor should be granted to someone who has demonstrated leadership, academic excellence, and community service, and in this case, because it's an athletic facility, sportsmanship. If you vote yes tonight and open the process, you will quickly discover that Alex Farisi demonstrates these characteristics, both on and off the track. You have a decision tonight to make between two policies, and it would be easy to refer this to another policy. The School Committee Policy Manual contains two policies, FFA Memorials, which recognizes students, staff, in the form of a perpetual award or scholarship. It also contains FF, the Naming of a Facility. When you read Mr. Nugent's proposal, I hope you will recognize that his proposal goes beyond meriting a memorial and meets the criteria outlined in the policy for naming a facility. When you read the naming policy, it includes words like "a significant event" and "a name with inspiration." Alex passed away in the spring of 2008. The events leading up to and after his death served as a significant turning point for the track program. Although it's been seven years since his passing, his name continues to inspire our athletes and their families. Mr. Nugent put it best in his proposal when he talked about the healing process that occurred and how, as a community, we transitioned from a track program to a track family. That something so positive could come from something so tragic should be recognized and remembered. I agree with Mr. Nugent that there is an unspoken commitment from the members of our teams to uphold the same standards that Alex set for himself. Today, not only do we have an incredible high school program, but also a very active middle school program, with over three hundred middle school students participating and many competing at the state level. It is for these reasons that I ask you to vote yes, to open the process so that we can consider Mr. Nugent's proposal and hear from the rest of the community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe Stout. I'm a senior at North Andover High School and one of the captains of the North Andover Track Team. I'm here tonight to support Coach Nugent and the proposal he submitted to name the track after Alex Farisi. Alex embodied what it meant to be on the North Andover Track Team. Although I never ran with him, his contributions remained very potent throughout my four years, especially through the Alex Farisi Meet. Please vote yes tonight. Your vote will give students like myself the opportunity to express our support for Mr. Nugent's proposal. Thank you.
So, I didn't realize Barbara was going to be so wonderfully, I should have expected that, but it's kind of a hard act to follow. My name's Steve Nugent, 35 Holletree Lane. I speak to you as a resident, as the track coach, a guidance counselor. You've hopefully read my letter, and I wholeheartedly, I wrote that with my heart. It took me many years to piece the words together for that letter. I want to thank you tonight for putting it on the agenda. I want to thank, you know, all the people who have come out to support tonight as well. My statement will be short. I just, I truly hope that we can have a yes vote tonight and allow this process to continue. You know, being a guidance counselor for fifteen years, unfortunately, I've lived through so many tragedies, and many that have hit me and touched me in many different ways. I truly believe that there's different ways to memorialize people, there's different ways to pay them tribute, and I don't want this particular effort to be interpreted as the most important way or any more important than any other way that we would remember any of the other student athletes or students or members of our community who have passed. I just believe that this is the right thing to do in this particular instance. This young man and this, the set of circumstances that led to his death and passing were unlike any other that I've experienced in my life and as a guidance counselor, as a coach, as a father. So, I just hope that we can get your blessing tonight and allow this process to move forward and allow the people from the school community and the town community to hear, have their voices heard. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Hi, everybody. Mike Cokely, 191 Cotterfield Road, and I'm here representing the NAAA. I'm the president of the North Andover Athletic Association. First of all, thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. When we talk about the decisions that you have to make, I know there's a lot of variables you have to consider, and we know that precedent is a big one in a decision like this, right? So, it's something that we can relate to in terms of, you know, what we debate every time we go and say, "All right, if we're going to spend money here, does that mean every time something like this happens, we have to do this? Every time X happens, we have to do Y?" Two things, I think, that, you know, really will make this, make precedent a factor that you don't have to consider here, really. One is the policy that you have, which allows that or forces every proposal to be brought forth and stand on its own merit. There is no if this, then that. So, every committee that goes forward doesn't have to worry about, they have the policy to fall back on, you know? The second is that, when talking about precedent, it is that, "Well, if this happens, then we have to do that." As Steve said, you know, a tragic event like this, we hope that this is a one-time occurrence, right? It's not an anytime occurrence. If this happens, then that happens. Those two factors alone, I think, say precedent is not something, is not one of the factors that you have to take into consideration to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Patrick Leary, 259 Campbell Road. I come here tonight to support this from a personal experience that I have. So, in 1988, I lost my father to cancer. He was my high school coach, and in the months before his death, he worked tirelessly to preserve a baseball field in Arlington that was built the same year as Fenway Park. And my father knew he was going to die, and people in the town, knowing that the field actually had never been named after anybody, wanted to name it after him. And he said, "That's ridiculous, you know, it's a field, you know? Great things get done by people who don't care who get the credit." And my father was fifty-nine years old, and Alex was all of seventeen. And I know he had a great future ahead of him. I have learned about him with, by talking with Steve Nugent, Bill Varney, I'm involved with the track program in town here. And, you know, I think about what my father's response would be, and I think of what Alex's response probably would be too, in like, "What are you guys crazy? I mean, come on, you know, naming, naming a track after me?" Well, I think it's incredibly appropriate to name it after Alex, in the same way that the field became named after my father, and it was very appropriate because he saved it from being transferred into basically condominium complex. And so, you know, we have a track, we have a great program in town, we have a track meet that's named after Alex, and I can, I can clearly see that thirty years from now, it's going to be celebrating its thirty-fifth anniversary as the annual Alex Farisi Track Meet, and it would be, it should be held on a track that's named after him. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
I don't live in town, but I am the principal of the high school, and I just wanted you to know that the high school staff and all the people who are in this building, whether they knew Alex or not, are very much in support of this. We support Steve's very lovely letter that he wrote in support of Alex, and in the eight years that I've been here, this was a significant event for this school and this community, and Alex deserves this honor. So, we are very supportive of this.
Is there any other public comment?
Zach Frelick, 87 Sugarcane Lane. I wouldn't feel right leaving here if I didn't come up and talk about the impact that Alex had on me. At the end of our track banquet that we have at the end of every year for outdoor track, this medal, the 2008 Boston Marathon Medal is passed down from track athlete to track athlete to an individual who best embodies the values that Alex had, and I was very blessed and thankful to have received it. This medal has, for me, has made a very important impact on my life, and it has truly changed and benefited me as a person and as an athlete as well. Anytime I felt weak or I was going through a tough time, I'd remember Alex, and I could just say his name, it would just, it would give me strength. He's taught me that you only have so many opportunities to throw on your uniform and compete, to go out there and have fun, and most importantly, just have, make an impact on someone in your life. I think that's why we're all here, we're all meant to be leaders, we're all meant to be people of influence in the lives of others. If you're not going to do it right the first time, then when are you going to have time to go back and fix it? These lessons have truly changed me, and it's because of Alex. You know, I'd never met Alex, unfortunately, but I pray and I thank him for the lessons that he's, that he's taught me. So, I ask you to please consider with everything that you have to renaming our track after him. Thank you.
Any other comment? Typically, we kind of follow our agenda, and we really kind of try not to take a lot of things out of order, but in view of, one, the temperature of this room, two, I think the emotion that is here, I would respectfully like to, to take 11E, which is the discussion regarding the naming of, or request to name and open the naming process after Alex Farisi, out of order, if that's okay with the Committee?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the naming process so we can continue to get...
This medal has, for me, has made a very important impact on my life and it has truly changed and benefited me as a person and as an athlete as well. Anytime I felt weak or I was going through a tough time, I'd remember Alex and I could just say his name and it would just, it would give me strength. He's taught me that you only have so many opportunities to throw on your uniform and compete, to go out there and have fun and most importantly, just have, make an impact on someone in your life. I think that's why we're all here, we're all meant to be leaders, we're all meant to be people of influence in the lives of others. If you're not going to do it right the first time, then when are you going to have time to go back and fix it? These lessons have truly changed me and it's because of Alex. You know, I'd never met Alex, unfortunately, but I pray and I thank him for the lessons that he's, that he's taught me. So, I ask you to please consider with everything that you have to renaming our track after him. Thank you.
Any other comment? Typically, we kind of follow our agenda and we, we really kind of try not to take a lot of things out of order, but in view of, one, the temperature of this room, two, I think the emotion that is here, I would respectfully like to, to take 11E, which is the discussion regarding the naming of, or request to name and open the naming process after Alex Risi out of order, if that's okay with the committee?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the naming process so we can continue, continue to get input on naming this facility. I think the testimony we've heard tonight is, is, you know, just a small sample. I think everyone's been inundated with emails, phone calls and whatnot. I would love to just make a motion to cut right to the chase, but I think we have a policy to follow and let's open up the process right now.
I would second that.
So, I'd like to open discussion with that and there's probably nothing that I can say that, that hasn't been said by everyone in this room and I think everything that's, that's felt in the room. I just wanted to share with, with the public and the committee as well. I received a ton of emails from members of the community, so thank you very much for them. I, yes, ah, sorry, pass those down. Just, I tried to keep track a little bit of who I was hearing from and it was everybody I heard, literally. I got an email from somebody in Japan who is a classmate of Alex's, who somehow found out that we were going to be talking about this and I don't know if it was Facebook or a reach out, but the amount of people who just responded was fantastic. I mean, I heard from Board of Selectmen, half a dozen classmates, coaches, residents, teachers, faculty members, some faculty members kind of designated that they lived in town and also worked here and every single one of them said, "Please, let's open this process." And I didn't hear one from anybody who said this is not kind of the right thing to do and I think everybody kind of put that in their emails that this was just the right thing. So, I will open it up for any additional discussion.
Yeah, I just would say, you know, the community's been, the support has been overwhelming for this issue, but I'd again acknowledge Steve for your kicking this off. I think it's, you know, I've been elected official for 20 years in this community and, you know, I still remember that day. I didn't know Alex at all, but, you know, you really synthesized what he meant to this community, so I'd say thank you and I'd say congratulations on a job well done. And I'd be remiss again for not thanking the chairman. When I first got appointed to the committee last September, this was something he brought to my attention right away. It had been brought up to him. He worked very hard on this naming policy and we really wouldn't be here today at this point in the discussion if it wasn't for your leadership on the issue, so I want to thank you again for that.
Let me just echo Mr. Tricia's comments by also complimenting Mr. Nugent about your, your patience and your tenacity about sticking with us on this. I know you've been encouraging us for a while now and we just had to sort of get everything in order for ourselves to make sure, as one of the speakers said, we were able to deal with this without having to worry about precedent setting. So, I appreciate you sticking with us on this.
I think for me, the most overwhelming piece was hearing from so many people in the community, from classmates, teachers, parents, community members, there's many more I'm not thinking about, but to get all of your emails and I think particularly the personal connection, that, that was sort of the overwhelming theme for me as I read through them and I think that really spoke volumes for, for why this was such an important proposal for you, Mr. Nugent, so thank you.
I just had one more comment on the, on the emails. The thing, another thing that impressed me about all of your responses was we've had other events, as you may be aware in the past, where we got a ton of emails on other subjects, not nearly as pleasant as this. A lot of those were literally sort of recycled, cut and paste emails. These were all each personalized. Very impressive.
Okay, so I don't know if there's additional discussion. I just want to kind of remind people of the policy and that is if we vote to open the naming process at our next two meetings, we will have public forum, which is an opportunity for anyone in the public to speak regarding the naming of the track for any candidate that's out there. I know we're, we're all certainly thinking of one person at this point in time, but there may be others that are brought forward from the community. So, a yes note kind of brings us to the next two meetings and our third meeting after that is actually the final vote. So, I know, Mr. Nugent, you've been patient with us, but we've kind of, four more meetings kind of with the process if we do a yes vote. So, I'm going to do a roll call.
I.
Mrs. Terese? Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so four to nothing. All right.
And it's very, it's very appropriate that at town meeting, we approved the resurfacing of the track. So, the timing might be nice for all of this to come together at some point this coming year, so that'd be nice. Thank you all for coming.
Don't feel obligated to stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Give people a minute or two. So, I want to jump back to the agenda. I know most of your friends have left, but we'll, we'll give you the opportunity to, to present. I think this is your last meeting as a North Andover High School student, so first, thank you very much for your patience in meetings.
No, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk at your meetings. So, basically what's going on in the school is, well, most of the seniors are done with high school now. This past week, we had finals and today was officially our last day. Luckily, I didn't have any finals, so I had a nice week off. Most of the seniors actually went to Canterbury on Friday. The physics classes were able to like go together as, you know, they were all there actually. It was a fun day. So, this Sunday, we have prom at the Boston Park Plaza and then for the rest of the week, we have a clam bake and we have a comedy night at, I think it's senior, wait, it's Stevens like estate building. And then we, we're going to King's Bowling and that's in Lynnfield Marketplace, so I'm pretty excited about that. And then Thursday, we have scholarship night and graduation's on Friday. So, like that's about it. I don't think I've told you, but I'm going to James Madison University.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah. I'm pretty excited, it's like weird to move on, but yeah. But thank you again for letting me come here and talk. It's a, you know, a great, you know, uh, sorry, can't think of the word. Honor, yes. But yeah. But thank you again and this is Matt. And Courtney.
You don't know, but Nicole competed for the state of Massachusetts for gymnastics early in the month and she finished third.
Yes.
On the balance beam in the country. So, I want to acknowledge that. And now she's thinking about gymnastics in college, so.
I may do club gymnastics. They actually did really well at Club Nationals. They came in first place, so I'm excited. What?
At James Madison?
Yes, James Madison, yeah.
Excellent.
Thanks.
It's kind of like David Letterman's final report, so. All right. Any, anything that you want to add, Matt and Courtney? It's Courtney, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Nicole pretty much hit everything there for the seniors. Yeah, the baseball teams, they're doing great, they're, well, they're hopefully going to qualify for the Super Eight tournament and hopefully push further on to the postseason. You look at the Boys and Girls Lacrosse team, they both had phenomenal seasons and also hoping to have a long run into the postseason as well.
I'm still a sophomore, I'm still hanging in there, we're doing great so far and, and I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and be here.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
You guys don't have to stay? Your friends are still in the parking lot if you need a ride home or something.
So, I just want to say thank you to Nicole and actually thank you to both of you for, for being here all year and coming to the meetings and just giving us a glimpse of what's happening at the high school. I think it's been a really important piece to our meetings, so we appreciate the time and the effort.
It was a pleasure.
So, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next Friday. All right. So, if the committee will allow me, I'm going to, I kind of hate to do this, but I, I know that our old business is going to take a little bit of a while. If we could take a couple other things out of order, because I know we have members here for the health report and the school physician, so 11A and B. All right, so 11A, and I'm just catching up on my, is the health report? Sorry, go ahead.
Did everyone pass around the copies or enough for everybody?
Sorry.
So, 11C is also part of the health report. Can we start with that? Is that okay?
Sure. Sorry, I'm just playing catch-up here.
That's fine.
What are you driving? Where am I so off here? Yeah. Maybe easier than finals, okay.
So, there are three policies that are required to have a review tonight and the first one is the school district wellness policy and we have no recommended changes this year. The Health Advisory Committee meets and we don't have any changes to the policy, it's working fine in all the schools right now. The second policy, the emergency plan, that policy is reviewed every three years. We have no changes to that policy as well. And that's given to the principals every year and that's kept on file and that, I send that report in every year as well. And the third policy, the athletic concussion policy, that's reviewed every two years and that also has no changes recommended.
And I assume, Ms. Berth, that means we, we need to take no action and just quickly?
You take no action, right? And every two years, I'll bring it to your review again.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions at this point?
I do not.
That's easy? No? All right.
So, now I typically give you the kind of clinical review for the year and when I thought back of it, it was pretty much a lot of focus on public health this year, the beginning of the school year, with some of the clinical advisories that I've listed on the handout, starting with entrovirus, Ebola fears, the norovirus at the middle school, and then most recently, the record-breaking pollen counts that we've had and the number of students that we've seen, as well as the measles outbreak in California and then a few cases that we had here in Massachusetts. Encouraged a lot of parents to call us about who's exempted in our community and what do we do about it, so it made me think about where school nurses started and it was in 1902, basically for that reason, a lot of public health issues and how to keep kids in school. We made it through all of these events and so I'll just move forward here for the, for the Health Services. One project that the DPH had us do this year as a CQI project, again related to this, school nurses helping with attendance, was to take a look at all first graders from last year and how many were absent 10% of the year, follow them the beginning of this year, do an intervention with the parents to help them understand how to keep in school if there's any health issues that we could assist them with to get the students back in school and then we monitored them after. So, that's still ongoing with the state, 87 communities participated in that CQI attendance project. Concussions, where I think as a district, the number's a little bit higher than last year, but I think it's starting to level off, awareness, I think we do a good job, all of our coaches are very educated now and we work with staff as far as academic accommodations to take care of the students with the concussion. New this year in elementary, the Brain Injury Association has a new Think Ahead program to help younger students think about playground safety and wearing helmets and that we started in a few of the elementary schools this year. We work with the Board of Health, with the Family Flu Clinic. Again, that's kind of another, another ongoing project that we do. It's kind of just, the community knows about it, we're going to do it every October, it's in the high school. We have met, well, over 500 this year were immunized. Same with the Esper screening program for substance abuse. We have a great relationship with guidance, we're a very lucky community, other communities are struggling. How to get this started, we've done it now two years for every ninth grader and Parent Resource Network is also involved. We bring in speakers to try to address as early as possible with our students to try to stay away from any substance abuse issues. We have the asthma allergy group, which meets three times a year, two of our nurses do that for parents. It meets at St. Michael's Church and we have speakers come in three times a year to help parents with the students that have asthma allergies. And another project that I'm trying to work on, I was elected to be treasurer of the Mass Nurse, School Nurse Association this year and there's been some new federal changes about reimbursement for municipal Medicaid and we're just trying to get the state up to speed. Right now, we can still bill for the $4.55 per 15 minutes, but it's very specific what you're allowed to bill for, but the federal regulations are allowing that to be broader and we're just waiting for Massachusetts to update their regulations so we can bill for that as well.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You baseline athletes or all students?
All students, every ninth grade student.
For concussion, oh, for?
Oh, sorry, that was for Esper. For concussion, that's for only athletes.
But they're all baseline before they start their sport?
I believe that's true.
In sport, yes.
Yep. Thank you.
That is correct.
At the beginning, I was so involved with that, but now the process is so smooth that I almost forget that it even happens because it, it just does.
But all ninth graders get Esper, right?
Yes, they do, every trimester.
And that's a, that's a, a personal thing, I mean, an interview kind of a?
It's an interview, it's a four-question interview, depending upon how they respond to the, to the question, it can go into a more detailed screening. So, numbers for health office visits. I have a chart with all the different schools this year, just to show you all the colors, just to show that they trend the same, no matter what school you're in, it kind of trends the same. Obviously, February, we weren't in school that many days. Sargent's numbers are high, it also includes the medically fragile room at Sargent, so that's why some of their numbers are a little bit higher than the other schools. May will be very, very high. The allergies with the seasonal allergies, you know, there's not a lot of things we can do to help alleviate that because you need to take allergy medicine, but, you know, cool compresses, just to get the kids to stay in school was the goal. Page two, our return to class rate continues to be high, 94.7%. Again, related to academic achievement, DPH is really pushing this to keep, you know, kids in school, attendance is important. We see about 84% of the, of all students at least once during the school year and then the next, I mean, all the rest are kind of a breakdown of what types of reasons the students visit the health office. The 911 call actually is now six because we had a call yesterday at one of the elementary schools, but, I mean, some of the, obviously, students with diabetes, we see a lot. Musculoskeletal assessment, that's typically playground rolled ankles, things like that. Neurological is headaches and your concussions and things like that. Any questions on that page? Page three, the top ENT, that means ear, nose, throat assessment. Skin integrity would be like your cuts and things like that that come in and that's why that number is high. why that number is high. Number six is all the communications that we have with parents, school staff, and community agencies. And then the chart number seven, we kind of track each year these conditions that we report to the state. Again, food allergies are very high, that's why we have the food allergy and wellness program in place to keep the food out of the classrooms for that. I hope to see them trend lower as some of the practice will change, as they're starting to introduce some products to children earlier, so that hopefully that might, might help. I know there's been some studies on that recently. Eight and nine are behavioral, emotional conditions, and then the special healthcare needs that we address. Last page, the screenings. Another part of the nurse's role is, of course, hearing, vision, postural screening. Last year, I think one of the most important was the vision referrals, because you have to be able to see to work well in class. And last year, we had some trouble getting parents to bring their students in for, or their children in for vision exams, and so we really worked on that this, this year, tried different strategies to contact them as best possible, and we have about 88% of referrals completed so far this year. So that's much better than the 75 we had last year. Health education continues. The nurses do that in the various classrooms. Some of, one program that grew this year was the puberty program, where we have fifth grade parents. It used to just be a video shown at an elementary school, and now we invite parents to the middle school. We have the principal speak to kind of welcome the parents to the middle, middle school. We have the health educators from the middle school and the high school talk with the parents about the whole continuum, and I think that's been a program that's really shown some really great collaboration with our teams. And the last, number 12, the BMI, really is, hasn't changed. I think, I mean, I'm not sure what more we can do. We have, you know, as mu, as many wellness programs as we can with all the grades, and Erica Murphy, and, you know, follows the guidelines for nutrition as far as what meal she serves. And 13 is that Liz Mount and Gail Monroe are retiring after 24 years. We don't turn over nurses very often in North Andover. They both started September of 1991, and they're both finishing June of 2015.
Congratulations.
That's great. Can I ask you a quick question about the obese and overweight? I mean, I know that there was a lot of conversations.
There was conversation about sending letters home to parents. So we don't send letters home to parents.
So we just don't send them, but we're tracking it?
We have to. We're required, that's what came out of it. We are still required to track, we report to the state, but we don't, we are not required to send the information to parents. They can look at it, it's on Power School.
Okay. Okay. I know that, you know, my, my kids are all in elementary, so I don't log on, because it's really more attendance at this level.
Okay.
But I'd be curious to know how many people really know or see that it's there. I haven't heard anybody talking about it, so I didn't even really comprehend that it was being kind of evaluated there, so interesting.
And these are all percents? Is that what these are?
Yes. I'm sorry. Right, that's a percentage of our students that are in that category.
But in the, in the main body of the table, whether it's color-coded, is that a number?
That's, North Andover, that's our, 26.9%, that's ours. And then the state, the state hasn't calculated, well, the state has calculated, but they haven't done reports since 2011, 12. I did call them again, just to, so I could fill in my chart, but it depends on who the governor is and what reports they want, and this last one didn't want the reports done, so they have the numbers, but they don't make a report.
Okay.
So I have a quick question just about, obviously, we had NAMSSBOLA.
Yes, we did.
At the middle school, I mean.
We did.
Was there anything that we learned from, you know, when that first started to have the outbreak that might have, I don't know, the incubation stage of that, if we could have nipped that earlier, or, you know, hindsight now, I mean, do we, we had a lot of kids get sick.
Right. So the virus is very quick, though, because the day before, we didn't have any absences.
Okay.
And there was a situation that happened after school that I believe probably triggered it, and then those kids in that hallway after school, when it happened, brought it, it was in a particular, it was seventh grade hallway, and
Yeah.
That's what happens with norovirus. I mean, you can
It's not very well-known for being airborne, but this might be one of those exceptions, where, you know, somebody's actively vomiting in a, in a hallway.
Yeah.
Spread of virus is quite high.
Okay.
One of those things that might end up being a case report, you know, so.
Okay. I just know, you know, obviously, it impacted a lot of families, and, you know, it, it really kind of hit that seventh grade, but, you know, obviously siblings kind of, you know, all over the place were impacted by it, and I just wondered if, you know, i- if there was something that we could do, or, you know.
So I did meet with the Board of Health after, and we talked about it, talked with the epidemiologist in the state. We got pretty glowing reports from the state that they're really happy with how we handled the situation. I put my hand in the trash to get samples, so that they could know exactly what it was.
Thank you. That's not an hard job description.
It was important, you know, they wanted to know what, 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 what's the word?
This is bordering on too much.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank her to Cheryl and her leadership, as well as the team she has that works so, so well together, and it is, I've never seen a team work so cohesively together for the benefit of our students in so many ways. They have, as you can see, they have their fingers in so many things, so to speak, but their use of data, and their use of data to actually benefit students and families is truly commendable, so thank you.
And I would add to that, that this isn't the first time we've had some unusual circumstances, you know, we, H1N1, you know, we had, we've had some
We have.
Interesting activities. Go on, and you've, you and your staff have handled them all very well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the financial, oh, I'm sorry, the health report?
For the health office visits, can you just maybe describe what, does that include, like, going to get your medication as well as if the child's not feeling well?
Yep, that includes medication and office visits, doesn't include screenings, so that's taken out of that. And then on the next two pages, that kind of is what types of things that they come for.
Okay.
And I just pulled out some of them that are required for us to send to the state.
Sure. I guess the only thing that I was thinking about is we, of course, will go into budget season again.
Oh, I always ask for more staff. Every year.
I'm sure. But also just making sure that we use this data when we think about the allocation of the nurses in terms of
Yep.
And I don't know, and I know it's a lot of work that you put together already, but even knowing, so I know you've kind of separated it out between, like, over 15 minutes or under 15 minutes, and knowing, because I know sometimes the numbers don't always exactly mean what they show, you know, like, for some of the higher schools, where a lot of those medication, where it's more quick, or where, do those schools also have a lot of longer visits versus shorter visits? That might be helpful to us as we think about next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Want to jump to 11B? Which is the first reading of the annual appointment of the school physician. And the administration is requesting that we again appoint Dr. Chan to serve as a school physician consultant for fiscal year 16 at a cost of $6,300. And I am gonna be wrong on this, but I think you've been with us six years?
I think it's longer. I've been here 10, and he was here when I got here.
Okay.
Eleven years now.
Okay. All right, sorry.
That's all right. Oh, yeah, right. It's also in $6,300 for that whole time, too.
You're not making a lot of money off of this job, right?
But that's not why I aim at this.
Right, right, right. So I don't know if the committee has any questions for Dr. Chan?
Twelve years? Is it 12, 10, 12 years you've been doing it for?
Yeah, I've been in practice pediatrics for 15. Got involved maybe about two years into
Okay.
Into practice, it's 12, maybe more.
And the recommendation is to reappoint him?
Yes.
Would it be for the sake of time to make this appointment right now, or do we still have to have a first reading on it?
Typically, we
I know we do typically, but it sounds like you've been doing it for 10, 12 years, why make him come back another?
Usually, he doesn't come back. I think he just comes for the first one.
Right.
Yeah, he doesn't have to come back.
Yeah, he doesn't have to come back.
So one
I think it's in the bag.
I'm happy to come.
Yeah, no, 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 no need for that.
If you want to suspend the rules and
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and, and reappoint for another, another year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
So I guess is there now a motion to?
There's a motion to appoint Dr. Chan to serve as a school physician consultant for FY16 at a cost of $6,300.
Second.
All right, so David and then Zora with a second. All in fa, any discussion additional? All in favor?
Aye.
You definitely don't have to come back.
So now you're going for 12 or so.
That's right.
Perfect. All right, so we'll take that one off the list for next week.
Great.
For next meeting. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your assistance and collaboration.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Thank you. All right, so we've, we've jumped all over, and I think if we could jump to 11G, we have the first reading for the Sargent School Playground Phase Three. Oh, you know what, sorry, you know, I know, I'm sorry, Dr. Scuzzra, we have a very fast, and I know that you've got the chorus group. So can we jump to 10C, which is just the overnight trips? And I don't know, I'm sorry, we didn't know that the concert was, was hitting at the same night. So we have, I think it's page 41 in my packet. Any additional questions? I know we got the packets of information from, from Beth.
All seem satisfactory to me, Mr. McDevitt.
Yep. So for 10C, is there a motion to approve the trips as presented?
So moved?
Second.
So second, all in favor of approving the trips, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They are approved?
Thank you. Dominican, they've already had 23 kids sign up, so thank you. They'll be very excited to know they're official.
All right, awesome.
And thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so now we'll jump back. Sorry, 11G. Sorry.
I am generally cold, so I
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tonight's a good night, right?
Thanks.
Karen Davis, the chair of the PTO Playground Committee at the Sargent Elementary School. I've been here the past two years in the capacity of donating some play structures to the school department. Tonight, I'm here in a little different context. It's to review Phase Three of the playground renovation project, which looks and feels very differently than the previous two phases. And so I just wanted to help you understand the scope of that phase, and then a little bit of what we'll need from the school department as we go through the process for Phase Three. Before I go into the details of Phase Three, just wanted to quickly recap Phases One and Two. We replaced the primary play structures at the elementary playground. We added more swings, and that was done purely with funding raised by the community and the PTO and the families of Sargent. And then the labor also was provided by volunteers to help offset some of the, the costs for Phase One and Two. So if you flip to the next page, this is basically the after picture of the, the fruits of our labor for Phase One and Two. For Phase Three, I think the best way to think about it is it's a, a kind of a finishing phase. It's got a lot of hardscaping, and it also utilizes CPC funds. This is not the type of work that community volunteers could take on, and so the, the labor and the material costs are fairly significant. So we presented to the CPC and had those funds approved at last year's town meeting. And basically, the scope of Phase Three is to implement two standalone play structures that are basically gonna sit in between the two larger play structures that are there today. And these play structures are focused on adding additional play elements for the students with limited mobilities, which we have a fairly large population of at, at Sargent School. And we'll also be replacing the safety surfacing containment border. There are pictures in the appendix, so you can see the current state, but it's basically falling over and all the mulch is washing away. So the money that the town spends to replenish that mulch each year is literally getting washed away with the rain. And we'll also be looking to extend the hot top area to increase the, the play area for the children, and then also paving a portion of the, the playground right outside the gym wall, which is currently just dirt, and the kids play wall ball there, and it just kicks up a lot of, lot of dirt, and, well, probably drags it into the school, too. So we're working with multiple providers for Phase Three. We've enlisted Compan and Ulti Play to provide the standalone play structures, and then we're, we're working with Race Antili in the procurement department, and he's hooked us up with Arco, who's been out to do a couple site visits, so that we can get a quote for the work that needs to be done. The target timing right now is a little bit up in the air, pending some next steps, which I'll go over in a moment, but we're hoping to have all of the work done July and August, because of the nature of the work, it does have, have to be done at a point when school is closed. So on the next slide is the proposed layout. I know there's a lot going on in this slide, so if you just look at it, it's basically an aerial view with the school building itself in the bottom right-hand corner. So to kind of help orient you, I'll walk through it, starting from the right to the left. So one of the primary reasons why we're here tonight to walk through the, the Phase Three scope with you is because some of the work that needs to happen is in proximity to wetlands. We received a determination from the Conservation Commission that we need to file a formal application through the Notice of Intent process. And because the PTO doesn't own the school grounds, it's actually the school department that has to sign off on that application. So this is a little bit of creating the awareness and the visibility, so that when it comes time to file that paperwork, you all are kind of in the loop and well aware of what that entails. So the reason that we're running up against the, the wetlands buffer zone is because we're looking to implement, increase or extend the hot top, but also add a full-size basketball court. There are currently two basketball hoops on the existing hot top, but one of them faces the playground structures. And so you have kids literally playing basketball with the backboard being slides and climbers where other kids are playing. It's just, it's not a safe situation. And then the other basketball hoop faces the driveway. So again, if it's the bus circle, so if kids are missing the backboard, then you just, you have balls rolling out into the driveway. So we're, we really worked hard to try and find a design that could still accommodate a full-size basketball court, but position the hoops in a, in a way that they're much safer for playing. So the current location of the basketball has the hoops basically facing empty play field versus active play areas. And so we would remove the existing hoops, and then the hot top that's currently there would just remain multi-use for kids playing tag, four-square, hopscotch, all that good stuff. And so the hot top extension and removal of the basketball courts is one part of the Phase Three scope. You'll also notice kind of a yellow border going around all of the play structure equipment. That is to signify the replacement of the containment border. And today, the containment border probably only goes around two-thirds of the actual play structure area itself, which is contributing to all the, the runoff of the mulch. So what we have scoped out is actually building containment border around 95% of the playground structures, leaving an opening for children that, that have special mobility needs to, to still have access to the playground. And then basically, the Unity Climber and the Supernova are the two standalone structures that we've provided, that we've selected to implement. And then up in the left-hand corner is just a picture of that wall ball area. You can see that it's, it's pretty dirty, and so what we're looking to do there is just add some pavement and really finish off that play area. So the next steps, step number one, I mean, we're here tonight, kind of checking the box, making sure that you have an understanding of the project, but But we really need to start working with the Conservation Commission. We're in touch, working closely with Heidi and Jen to figure out the necessary paperwork and supporting documentation that's needed to complete that filing, and then go through the CONCOM hearing process. So it's a little bit TBD when we're going to be able to file that application, because we just got that determination that we had to file today. But we will move as quickly as possible to do that. In the meantime, we're working with Arco to really finalize the quote, get the exact measurements and scope, so that we can get a good bid for the work. And then lastly, the school committee's determination to move forward with the project, as long as everything else is checking out with, you know, the CPA funds through the CPC and Conservation Commission.
If the, if that asphalt area was in some other location, you wouldn't have a conservation issue, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Because it's a non-permeable surface next to the conservation area.
Yeah, so we're well outside of the fifty buffer. There's a twenty-five, a fifty, and a one-hundred, so we're somewhere in that one-hundred. And the reason why it wasn't clear if we were going to have to file or not is because there's already an existing paved walkway that's actually closer to the fifty line. And so there was some question as to whether or not our project would come close enough to the buffer. So one of the options that we're exploring is can we pull the hot top in a little bit to get it outside of the buffer? We're not sure that that will enable us to get the full-size basketball court. So those are some of the options that we need to consider.
But other than this paperwork with the Conservation Commission, the money you have will pay for everything that you're doing?
There, if we, if, so part of the process for conservation is to evaluate the water, stormwater runoff. And if they find that the design that we've worked through with Arco is not sufficient, it could lead to additional costs to remediate and mitigate the stormwater runoff. But that won't be determined until part of the, until part of the hearing process with CONCOM. So there's always the potential with any of these projects, right, for there to be gotchas and unexpected costs. But we're trying to, as much as we can, tease those out and keep our eye on them.
Are there any costs associated with applying for that, Notice of Intent?
Yes. Yeah, then, yeah, the Notice of Intent has fees, state and town fees, that we'd have to pay for. I don't know what those amount to yet.
Does the town have the ability to waive those fees for the school?
That's a good question, I don't know.
We should ask that question. Seems like...
They typically do, the board of selectmen typically, when it has to do with town property.
Yeah. We literally got word that we had to file a Notice of Intent at like six o'clock this afternoon. So we just haven't had a lot of chance for follow-up discussions and evaluation.
Who represents you to, I mean, obviously, that's the opinion of the Conservation Administrator, that you have to do this?
Yes, yeah, and I think it was a joint discussion between Heidi, who's the field inspector, Jen, who's the administrator, and then the commissioner, I'm not sure who that is, but they, all three of them reviewed it together.
I'm just saying, who represents, I guess, the Sargent School PTO interest in this?
Yep, so one of the volunteers on the committee is Dave Fenuelli. He's an architect by trade, so he's familiar with the processes, and he's the one that, for now, works up our sketches. But we haven't gone so far as to formally hire a civil engineer or anything like that.
And is there any discretion at all that they have not to do this?
I've been told that there is, but I don't know, you know, that's, again, still what we have to discuss in terms of if we're willing to pull in the pavement a little bit, or are they willing to, you know, forego some of the requirements, so...
I hate to see a little hiccup like that really hold you back or add more cost to it.
Yeah, it definitely adds some additional time and potentially cost to the project. So, you know, we'll just work quickly here over the next week or so to flush out as many of those alternatives as possible.
Switching gears, Mr. McDevitt.
Yeah, sure.
Just for my education, because I just got on the board last September, could you just kind of describe what the thought process was for the whole playground, and was it going to be in three phases? And, you know, just from my, just from my background, you know, I was in legislature when we passed CPA, and I was in legislature when we amended it to allow towns to use CPA money for previously, you know, before, it was much more difficult to use it. And I think the thought process that a lot of us had in our minds was, you know, non-school playgrounds using CPA funds. And obviously, that is not the case. You guys are able to use CPA funds, which is great. I'm just curious to know what the, and maybe this is, maybe a larger discussion for us, to find out what other schools will be doing going forward, because this is, and kudos to you for raising that private money to build this, because this is going to be a one heck of a playground when it's done.
It already is.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I would just be concerned about our other schools and, you know, wanting to do the same thing.
Yeah, and that's a valid point, and it came up when we presented the, when the CPC presented our project to the Board of Selectmen last year. That exact concern of equity came up. And so what the CPC did last year was they allocated some funds from 2014 to do an assessment of all of the playgrounds in town. So what now Andrew Mailer has is basically that report, and he's got a lineup of kind of how each playground scored, and in agreement with John Simons from the CPC on an annual basis going forward, to kind of include one playground at a time to bring it up to speed. So I became aware of our potential eligibility to request CPC funds, because it had been done in a neighboring town. And I heard about it from a family member, and we just explored it and worked with the CPC. Really, the rationale being that the school playgrounds are community playgrounds. They're owned by the school department versus the town, but when school's not in session, you're going to find kids there playing. So that was really the, and if you look at North Thandover's open space plan, it talks about playgrounds and working in partnership with the school and the town to make sure that there's a plan to maintain them.
I'm absolutely on board with that. My concern, and maybe Jim can speak to this, is obviously, you raised a lot of private money. And again, kudos to you for doing that. Obviously, a lot of great parental support out there. I do worry about the ability of other schools, PTOs, to raise that kind of money to get. So could you maybe talk a little bit to, unless, I mean, I don't want to...
Yeah, I can tell you what, and this kind of got the ball rolling on the whole project, and Andrew Mailer then picked it up and kind of developed what is similar to the Facilities Master Plan for playgrounds. And it's not just school playgrounds, it's all playgrounds. And they used that report that was generated, prioritized them, and the plan is for each year, similar to the Facilities Master Plan, to use CPC money and some money that he's setting aside for playgrounds to address that list and get them where they should be, where each of them should be.
Any requirements?
Franklin's next.
Kittredge.
Oh, Franklin's next.
And then Atkin.
Franklin was approved in the...
Kittredge and Franklin are the next couple.
In talking with the other PTO presidents, there's an expectation that they're going to raise funds in addition to using the CPC funds.
That was my next question. So what's the, is, what's the expectation for some of these PTOs to raise? I mean, let's just be honest, I mean, there's different socioeconomic demographics at each school. What are the expectations? Is it supposed to be a fifty-fifty, are there?
No, no, there are no expectations. If they want additional equipment, they're certainly, they can choose what they want to do, what they want to raise funds for, but there's no expectation that there's going to be PTO-raised money for the intended projects, as they've been evaluated and planned.
And that's why Mr. Mailer worked, and as you said, Karen, you know, pulled aside money with the CPA to do the evaluation of all of them, and then they ranked them. So I think we have that, I don't, I can't get online now, but I can shoot that to you.
Sure, I appreciate that.
The first three projects, Franklin, then Kittredge, then Drummond.
Drummond, and they did repairs on Drummond last weekend or something.
This is, I think, a rebuild, a complete rebuild.
Yeah, so...
Thank you, nice presentation.
Thanks.
I just want to say a couple of quick things. I mean, I don't know how many people you have on the committee with you. Sometimes they end up being committees of one, or two.
No, it's definitely not, definitely not in this case.
But however many you have, I mean, you guys have done an absolutely fantastic job, and...
It has certainly been a team effort. You know, I have to give kudos to Dave Fenuelli, the architect. We would be absolutely lost and blind if he wasn't able to kind of direct us. And then Kathleen Bass also just really worked with, very close to John Simons, to explore the CPC front. So specifically, those two individuals have really stepped up, and then we've gotten all the feedback from staff and Dr. Foster. It was a very, very collaborative effort.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for all of the time and effort that you've put into it. I'm sure some of it was not easy, when you hit little hurdles all along the way. But, you know, one of the things that I know Andrew Mailer said relatively recently is, you know, that we ask people to kind of plan, and what you guys have really done in a multi-year approach is plan and then deliver. And you've continued to do that, and so I think, you know, you really need to be commended, and the students at Sargent really need to be appreciative of all the work that Mom and Dad and teachers and Dr. Foster and everyone else have done, because it's amazing. And if you haven't brought the kids, you got to bring them, because they'll...
It's like Middleton, though.
It's all country. It's fantastic.
We think of you guys as living in Bradford.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anything else, Mrs. Lempert or Mrs. Warren?
No.
All right. All right, so can we get back on agenda?
We're on track, we think.
Not a lot of the...
Status report, because there's some people waiting for the strategic plan.
All right, we'll just go all over the...
No, that's old business, eh?
All right.
No chairs report, no superintents report? Can you just get rid of those guys?
Yeah, 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 for efficiency's sake.
We could do those quickly, if you guys don't mind, three minutes?
Just do them real quick.
All right, so let's just jump back to seven, which was consent agenda, and that was approval of regular session minutes from, sorry, my page isn't catching up here.
April thirty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented in the packet.
Second.
Any, second?
Yep.
Any corrections, additions, modifications?
We're good.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, sorry?
I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm not going to...
Okay, so we still have three?
Yep.
All in favor of approving the minutes as presented in the packet?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. No no's, and Mrs. Warren is an abstention, so, three oh one. Perfect. The chairs report, I'm going to keep relatively brief, but I just wanted to point out a couple of quick things. I don't know all of the details yet, and I know it's kind of in the works and kind of coming up, but there is a program to help complement and support our students with, in conjunction with the library. And I think it is called a Million Minutes of Reading. And what that is, is for the students to spend, I think, all total, they need to spend something like nine hours of reading over the course of the summer, and they have the ability to turn in a ticket, which will kind of record that. And so the goal is elementary-wide, I think it's elementary-wide, if I, oh, I think Chrissy left, but to record up to a million minutes of reading for our elementary students. And the library is going to do some form of a temperature thermometer chart to see how we are doing with that. So I thought that was kind of a cool, interesting way, and hopefully will help people, help students keep engaged in reading over the summer. Next Thursday night is when we typically would have our next school committee meeting. We are not having it that week because of the high school awards ceremony, which will be occurring. Following night, obviously, is graduation, so congratulations to the class of 2015, which is a little bit scary that it's already here. On June sixteenth, from six to eight, our school administration building will be having an open house. So if you have driven by that building and the former police station and seen it come down and go back up, we welcome you to come out and take a look at that. And our next meeting is currently slated to be June eighteenth, although it is also a reorganization meeting. I'm going a little bit crazy trying to get all five people to be free on the same night, so we will, I don't know if it will be June eighteenth, but we will try to find a date, and as soon as we have that, we will update our calendar with whatever that date is. So that's all I have, Mr., Dr. Hutchins, Mr. Superintendent.
I thought you were going to call me Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't know, I'm just, the agenda's so off, it's...
I'm just going to say that this is, as you can even tell by tonight, the amount of activity that goes on at this time of year, it's always a busy, we're always busy. But this, this time of year, it's just coming at you in all different directions. I think we all wish we could be at the concerts tonight, because they are absolutely fantastic, but you just, there's going to be conflicts across the board and everything. But I think I'd just simply like to commend the amount of work our team does to keep it all going. In the midst of all of that, we had a full leadership meeting this afternoon from three-thirty to five, and talk about putting forth energy at that time of day, when everything else is going on, knowing that they're also going to be here tonight. But we had scheduled it at the beginning of the year, and it sounded good. And everybody put forth tremendous amount of energy during the meeting, which was about transition, by the way. And it's about how, it's about supporting the team, but also supporting the transition with the new superintendent. That was the focus of our meeting. So that's really all I want to say. There is so much going on at all the schools right now, you can't mention it. And so it's, again, it's a function of following the school websites, our website, the district website, and I don't know how parents can do it, besides all the sports that are going at this time of year. So there's never a dull minute, but it takes a team to make that happen, teaming with parents, teaming with staff, teaming with the leadership team, makes it all happen smoothly, and I'd just like to put a commendation to all those involved. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be willing to move it on.
Okay, all right. So now let's jump out to 10A, which is the status report for the Strategic District Improvement Plan, the ESTAP.
What we're going to try to do tonight, by the way, it's all contained in these documents right here, all right? But we're only going to be showing a couple of pages, all right? And I'm going to, the team is right there, willing to address, and it's going to be in four sections, as far as the focus for our strategic plan is concerned. I'm not sure what's being shown. One is EM, what we call EM one, then there's PP one, there's PP two, and then there's CR one, all right? EM one is about really, what are we doing to try to impact classroom practice from a number of different perspectives? What you see in front of you is a template that I don't believe we've ever showed. I may have showed a blank one at one point in time. Now it's filled in, now it's filled in, so now it's not a template, it's now an action plan. This is the work that we've been doing, we had been doing with the state. We were one of the first pilots to work with the state in what they hope that they can support districts in the type of strategic planning that they expect, and research has shown has been effective. There's two sections. I'm going to first just simply describe what they are, and then we can talk a little bit about what's in there. We have no intent to go over all the evidence, because it's, and by the way, we trimmed it down, but there's two parts of there. One is about monitoring progress, who's going to do what, when, and when's it going to get done by? And so when we break down process benchmarks, we take the initiative, which we see up there, EM one, implement a system of best instructional practices that support teachers' professional growth and improve student learning. We all know, we're not going to improve student learning unless we improve teacher practice, all right? And by the way, that's never intended to be a criticism, it's just what professionals do, improve their practice constantly. So we set process benchmarks, and then after process benchmarks, there's links. For instance, if you see 1A, create a rubric for analyzing levels of critical thinking in process benchmark. Then you go down, and you might see early evidence of change. Now, early evidence of change is misleading. Early evidence of change does not mean you're going to see this right away in October. It's simply saying, these are things you should begin to see over years, but this is what you should be able to see in this year at some point in time. 1A, for instance, hundred percent of all teachers have used critical thinking protocol to review and revise common and other assessments, all right? So that, there, you begin to say, there's some measurement, all right? And so that's what you're going to be seeing in the early, early, early evidence of change benchmarks, all right? And again, and I know the consultant that worked with us showed, used, when she reported out to the state, some of our work as an example. This is just the first time we've done it this way. We have already projected into the draft of the next year's plan in the same manner... We have already projected into the draft of the next year's plan in the same manner, as well as we've taken all new district initiatives as far as connected to the budget and done one for every budget item as well. And those you'll be seeing next time, all right? But it's just, again, in the draft form. And then I'm going to have to say, this looks great and goodbye, but it'll continue. So, and again, we've done a lot of work with the leadership team. And this, this also is built right into, it wasn't there when I started the new superintendent's program, but it's built into the new superintendent's program now. So it would be something that Dr. Price would be connected to right from the start as well. So, again, it would, we could go on for hours on this because we do sometimes when we sit and talk and go over this work. And I would just allow, would ask the team to chime in. And if we were going to go through process benchmarks, when we say 1A through C, they're connected together. And then 2 sits alone, 2A, but then you have the 3s are connected together. So the theme of 1 is about what we're doing to address critical thinking in assessments, all right? And some of the evidence that you'd see throughout here is all connected to that. And again, we're not projecting the evidence just because it's.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Although I believe Bev sent you these in separate attachments, and it's immense. So I would just invite, between 1A, B, and C as far as process benchmark, as well as the early evidence of change benchmark, Gilli, Mary, Jim, Kara?
May I ask you a quick question before we start?
Sure.
So it just, I just want to make sure I understand how this might work. So if I take 1A, and I, I'm guessing I know who those two people are, I'm just guessing, wild guess on my part. And I go down to early evidence, 1A, then there's a big group of people that are doing stuff, right? But does that mean you two are going to go down to those big group of people and go like, so how did you do against what we started out to, is that how that works hypothetically?
Yes.
So you're kind of the, you're looking over their shoulders and saying, okay, we're going to now see if there's really truly early evidence that you're doing what we said we were going to do on that? Is that, is that how that, how that process works? But I failed on KH.
Kevin Hutchison's me. So unusual.
Silly me.
They're even gone yet.
Silly me, I know, I know, I know, that's bad, that's awful, that's awful. I have it written down, I have it written down on my paper today, right here. I wrote KH already today. That's awful.
Stan, I'll let these guys chime in, but I think it started back early in the year when we presented on, you know, the depth of knowledge. And we talked about Bloom's taxonomy and higher order thinking skills and questions. And it really started with that review, the beginning of the year with Faciliters' Collaborative Inquiry, starting to investigate, you know, where are we with our assessments? What type of questions do we have? What is the rigor and relevance? And from there, it really took off. And I'm going to turn it over to Mary and Kara to talk a little bit about.
One thing I, someone ought to speak to is, I think, just, we barely know what it means, and people at home probably don't, nothing at all, like EM1. So those were all extracted from a big list, right? You had a whole group of things you could have picked from, and you picked four. And these are the four now that you've been working with this year. And so I don't think people are quite aware that that's what that really means. That was a list, and there was the EM group, and there was the other, you know? So you might just speak to that a little bit, what those groups were.
So the folks at home, EM1 is the implement a system of best instructional practice that supports teachers' professional growth and improves.
But what's EM? What was that whole set of things you could have picked from? This is just one of those things.
We simply named it that.
Oh, did you?
That's what we named it.
Okay, but isn't it from a sort of a category of things you could have picked?
We created a category that came right out of the rubric for teaching practice, the giant rubric.
Right, yes, yes, yes.
Engaging students.
Yes, yes, okay. So that was the.
Engaging, EM is motivating, engaging and motivating students, one of those.
Okay.
Yeah, so EM1, although it's, you know, sometimes even we say, oh, we own PP1, PP2, EM1, EM2. It really started out at the beginning of the year with the, with all the training for the facilitators' Collaborative Inquiry. We met just across the room here, and it was really interesting to watch the process of looking at the assessments at the elementary, at the middle, at the high school, looking at what types of questions there were. And it kind of really came to fruition, and I'll let these guys chime in, but it came to fruition when you saw some of the folks come, I think, I don't know if it was last time or the time before, and they showed you some of the revisions. I think actually Deb Daly was doing some testing quiz with you guys, as well as Science, Amy Oteary. So it really kicked off there, and I'll let these guys chime in because they did a really nice job working with that group.
And one of the great things was, when we had the rubric initially, we brought it to the, at the time, we're having the facilitators' course, and we had the facilitators fill in what would be, I'm sorry. We had the facilitators fill in what would be instructional practices in the classroom that they could use that would look at higher order thinking skills. So they were part of the whole process as to, you know, if you were, if you were teaching, how do you get to level four? If you were writing an assessment, how do you ask level four questions? So it was kind of a put out there through the FCI course, and then when the FCI's met with the different, like, you know, grade level teams, then that became part of the whole looking at student work, changing assessments, analyzing assessments, reporting out, looking at data, et cetera. So it was, it's kind of, that was the basis for the whole groundswell of all the work we did this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes complete sense. So there's, there's sheets like this for the four areas, right?
That's true, like this, yeah. And again, what we've put in place is just pieces of evidence that connect with the different ones.
So a question I would have for all of you is, how can we, how can we, we, the school committee, how can we participate in the process? And how can we help you all? You know, what, what sort of feedback could we give you about this? Or how could we, you know, there's so much here that I won't, you know, maybe Ms. Warren might, but, you know, I'll know very little about, so I'm just, I'll have to sort of fake it. But how could we look at this information and then try to both participate a little bit and help a little bit? What, what should we, what should be our takeaway from this? Or what should be our participation in all of this? Because I don't want, you know, I don't want you to think we don't want to participate because I think we would. I just, often I struggle to know how, you know, and what would be reasonable participation, other than just looking at the stuff and going, wow, it's a lot of stuff, you know?
Yeah, I'll give you one answer.
Okay.
It's, so much of it to us makes sense. And so much of it, we end therefore almost taking it for granted that this is done, this is done, et cetera, when we mention something. And in particular, we benefit most by, what would you like to see as far as, especially from, and hear from the mouths of our administrators and our teachers, as far as presentations that connect with any of these, that then you can say, because our bottom line is, if we do this, student learning will improve. And therefore, we always are asking ourselves, so has it? You'll see, actually, there are some examples in, throughout these that will actually show some, well, this is the results they had. I'm thinking of one in particular in the business level. This is the assessment, and this is what we wanted students to know and be able to do throughout the trimester. And in these three assessments that we gave in common and looked at, and then after the first one, this is what we learned from it, and what adjustments to practices we were going to do to help students. They did it. What results did they get on their second assessment? They showed improvement. And that's the type of, to me, that's the most powerful piece that's connected. When, when you know, when we challenge to say, where's the level of critical thinking in this assessment? And you've changed that level of questioning within an assessment. You have to change the level of questioning in your instruction as well if you're going to get better results on the assessment. And so that's the impact that, sometimes it's hard to show.
Yep.
But we can show in some of the data examples we've chosen, we'll show that. I mean, we'd like to be able to show it for every single classroom and subject, but, you know, there's so many. But that's the type of work that's going on. And again, this is the first year we've dug into this type, at this initiative. And the suggestion is for the staff from the administrative team is to continue that same focus through next year, to dig a little deeper and to get it impacting everybody's discussion more often. So what would you, you know, when you look at these, say, geez, you know, if I was going to ask a teacher, and I'd like to hear from the teacher about something connected to this, what would it be?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think, for me, I just speak for myself, part of that would require, what would help me would be a little education on your part of me to understand enough so I could ask questions like that. I mean, I know a little bit, but probably not enough to ask an intelligent enough question to have somebody want to probably try to answer it. So, you know, there might be a little education, and this is like a next year, you know, fall kind of thing. But the other part is, and I, in his absence, I would echo Mr. Gross by saying, you know, anything we can do that's quantitative, because it's easy for us to look at, right? It may be, we may be deceived in thinking we understand what it means because it's been quantified, and that could be totally wrong. But nonetheless, you know, to the extent that we can do that in some way. And, you know, Dr. Hutchison and I have talked about this, you know, for things that are sort of qualitative in nature, you know, we're supposed to have in a number of meetings, you know, so it could be, how many of the number of meetings we're going to have did we have? You know, sort of like, we had three out of five, or four out of five, or.
And some of that in throughout.
You know, so, you know, that's the kind of stuff that will help us to get to a point where maybe we could focus on a couple of areas and ask some questions, you know, just. That's enough.
Part of the thing, I mean, you just mentioned it, for instance, we're focusing on, I would say, three initiatives plus the, the technology one. But as far as a lot of the work is concerned, it's been on the three. And the school committee might choose to say, we just want to dig a little deeper into one of them, because there's only so much time. What would it be?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, again, that might, you know, the starting point for that might be a little education about all the areas.
Yep, yep.
And then we would say, okay, whatever that is, that one. PP2 looks like the one we want to really do a little digging in or something, I don't know.
So I think one of the artifacts that, I can't remember when it was, and I want to say it was math, but I could be wrong. But I think they had brought the tests, whoever brought it, and they showed the level, the number of questions at the different levels of higher, of, from to higher order thinking. And then they showed the test that was reformulated and what that addressed. And I think those types of evidence, where we can just maybe see a little bit of what we're working towards and identifying, saying, well, this really addressed, you know, 1A and 1B, or whatever it might be. And I think even tying that into, like Gilli, when you give us updates on what's happening in the PD days, I think, just, it doesn't need to be something that's long-winded and, you know, robust, but just being able to say, you know, we're working on higher order thinking, here's what we've been doing, here's a sample of the test, the pre and the post of what we did in our own assessment of the higher order thinking using the rubrics we created. And then this is what we're seeing in terms of impact for students in higher order thinking. I think, and then tying it into, and that's why we had PD days in September and October, and that's what this has brought to our classrooms and to our instruction and to student learning. I think, to me, that's been the most, some of the most valuable, there's been lots of valuable things, but that's been very valuable to me, at least as a parent, to think about those things and how it's impacting the day-to-day classroom.
So I couldn't agree more. There's nothing more important than that so what question that you see in some of the data forms that are included in the packet. You know, one of the examples of, okay, this is what the teachers saw, and this is what they're going to do. And, I mean, that do part is the so what. So I will say, the school committee's been pretty good over the last couple of years of bringing more educational presentations forward than probably we had, you know, previously. So that's appreciative. And it's always good, anytime you can get the teachers in to actually talk about practice is a good thing.
Well, it's, it's the most interesting part sometimes of our school meetings, when we get the staff to come and tell us stuff. The other thing I would, I would encourage you all to do is, we don't say it as much as we did a few years ago, but, you know, this to me is the logical extension or just another way of looking at standards-based education, right? And we don't say that much anymore, but I assume that that's really what's underneath all of this. That's the, the foundation of all of what we're doing. And I think, again, some annual reeducation for us, you know, starting the year off and sort of going back to basics, and here's what we're trying to do, and here's how we do it, rubrics and blah, blah, blah. You know, it's not a bad thing, so we kind of, you know, we get a new baseline every time with now the added, the new stuff, the new stuff that, you know, you've come up with. And so, you know, and then hopefully we can ask good question.
And I think, oh, and I didn't mean to say that just had to be tests. Like, I'm certain, I'm sure there's projects and other that are non-quantitative but are more qualitative examples of student work product and projects and papers and things too.
Can I just make a quick observation? I mean, I don't remember exactly when it was. Probably two or three years ago, we started to have teachers just come and talk about some of the meetings that they were having in the professional development. And I think that it was kind of a little bit on their own, where we would say, you know, like the fifth grade teachers are going to get together. And then we would kind of ladder it a little bit, where the fifth and the sixth grades were talking together and talking about, you know, the expectations that the sixth grade had for the fifth grade students and, you know, vice versa, and how to get them ready and kind of move along there. And I, I remember at the time thinking, that was awesome, and that was great. And now I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing the comparison between the tests that we were giving two or three years ago and where we are. And I think everything we did before, like, that was horrible, like, this is now awesome. But I, and I'm joking a little bit, but I think with this really, in my mind, confirms for me the value of your positions and the curriculum coordinators and being able to work with the teachers to see this kind of moving and not just a little bit, but really starting that takeoff trajectory. And so, you know, I am excited for the new opportunities. I'm sad to see you leaving. But, you know, I think that the foundation, you know, has been a building block for a long time in the professional development days, which I think sometimes are challenging for parents to plan around and all of that stuff that kind of gets involved, especially when you have younger children. But when you see this level of information and kind of where it's going, I just, it confirms for me that I think we're on that right path. And I don't know how much of this we, we need to put out there. You know, I certainly don't want to have, you know, 100-page documents that are out there, but, you know, being able to put this stuff on the website for parents to go and get smaller snippets of this where they can then dive in further and, and see this. Because I think when people ask, well, what do they do? My kid got out an hour early, is that really enough time? Do they, and when you look at where we're going in the past couple of years, I think the value is there, but just helping us, again, communicate all the work that, that you guys provide, so.
I think one of the natural places that that, it might, we might be able to do something like that is the curriculum nights that we're holding right now. I think that would be a great place to showcase some of the work and to show, you know, as we're doing more critical thinking, for example, this one in front of us, you know, maybe showcasing some of that new work that's happening in the grades and maybe having that be a focal point of those academic nights. So I think identifying those changes and what's new or what's been revisited and, you know, rethought through might be a great way to then say, you know, and because of those professional development opportunities we've had, this is what we've now designed, this is how it meets the goals that we've set out for the district. I think it's just a nice captive audience.
Great example of an early evidence of change benchmark that is done at that time, and you can see the evidence, yep.
Mr. McDeve, you raised an interesting point. I'd like to suggest, if you don't mind, or if the committee doesn't mind, since this will be the last opportunity we'll see in public, Ms. Gregoire in this position, would it be okay if they gave like each a minute of how their year went, you know? Because it seems like we've been doing this, it seems like you've been doing this forever, and it's hard to believe, and this is just the end of the first year. I mean, it's like, this was a brilliant idea. And could each of you just give us a minute or two about your year in review and how you think it went?
Sure. Do you want me to start?
If you don't mind.
Do you want to start? Sure. Okay.
Looking good and bad.
Yeah, 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 and ugly.
I think, as you mentioned, it feels like it's been 10 years because we've been able to, I think, putting this together, let me see how much we accomplished and as much as I'm looking forward to accomplishing more and going more in depth. It's been great to even start, you know, we both came from the high school, part of the leadership team, knew what was going on here, you know, have a big background with the high school. But to see the work that's been taking place in the middle school and the elementary schools, and to be able to work with all six of those schools and continue working with the high school has been great to start building, and we mentioned, I think, early in the year early in the year we hear, really a, a system-wide, you know, North End Republic Schools education, that no matter what teacher you have, no matter which school you're at, you're leaving at the end of high school with an education that we can be really proud of, and, again, linked to the standards. So, for me, it's been great to meet all the faculty and staff and work with so many different teachers that, again, this is a small sample of the work that's been done across the district, and I think, again, if we went into any teacher's classroom, we could see samples of, of this in depth and the work that's happened. So, it's been fantastic to work with leadership team and be kind of welcomed in in this new position, and it almost felt like we had been here for years, which is nice, and have the opportunity to come to school committee and share some of that work, and again, just that small snippet of what's been going on. As Dr. Hutchinson mentioned, we are kind of building, you know, we kind of refer to it, building the plane as we're flying it, we're flying the plane as we're building it along the year. And this has been a good process to really start figuring out, you know, what, what should we see, what is that evidence, how can we show that, that the work that's taking place every day and at the professional development is purposeful and meaningful and connected. And I'm looking forward to going into next year with that plan already kind of in place, you know, at least a draft in the next few weeks, and be able to just dive deeper into some of these topics that we've kind of skimmed the surface on, so.
And so, I can, I refer to Kara and myself as kind of the yin and the yang. I'm kind of abstract random, and she's very concrete sequential, and so we've kind of blended really well as far as that goes. And having the background from the high school, I, it was both positive and negative. I didn't know what elementary was like, and so I was able to come in with an objective lens, and, and Lauren, it was, there was a huge learning curve for me this year that I truly welcomed, like, this was like, my big focus was literacy, and to, to learn about literacy and right from the early levels, it was amazing. And I think to work with the two literacy coaches this year and the way we built the program, it was a rough, it was rough at first because we're trying to figure out how to proceed, how people were going to accept us, how to get them into classes, how to get the teachers to, to start with the tier-one literacy approach. And the, the change in the last three to four months has been phenomenal. These two women have run parent nights, and at both the, the sergeant in the Atkinson School, where they have, like, shown parents what to do for summer reading, what to do for struggling readers, how to help their children. They're, they're taking that, they've used the website, they've created this website for all teachers to use. They're going to put the parent night, one of the suggestions was possibly have the parent night that they've used as a open house in September and, and start the year off so parents can see with all these, all these, like, tips on what to do. They've met with the librarians from the Stevens Estate, there's been a huge collaboration of Stevens Library, collaboration with the librarians and the reading coaches and the reading team. The reading team itself has met once a month all year. We're talking about, you know, how to take little steps to, like, improve the whole process and to make it a cohesive, every grade level, you know, what, what's the, what does an intervention piece look like? We've had three pilot intervention programs, one at the sergeant, one at the Kittredge, and one at the Franklin, and each one has built upon the other one. It, it's just been, they, they have just totally excited me, and it's been fabulous. Working with Greg, working with Jim, working with Hutch, it's just been, they have let us soar, and I just have one, I, I've loved the experience, I've loved seeing the whole K-12 perspective, and I like the, also the fact that although we've done the elementary and that's been our real focus, we met with Joan McQuade once a week, and we discussed, you know, what can we do at the middle school, and we've, we've worked there. We meet with Chuck Jackson once a week, what are we doing at the high school? So, it is, like, talk about transition, we're looking at the transitions eight to nine, five to six, and, and strengthened them as well and had the conversations in each level. First grade met with second grade, second grade met with third grade, so that's all happened, and the conversations about what are the three things you want kids to know and be able to do when you come into first grade, second grade, third grade, and opened up that dialogue. So, it's, 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 again, it's, it's kind of, it was a lot, and we haven't been able to really get down into the depth. That's why next year, having this continue, we've laid the groundwork and it, and we can get in deeper, so it's exciting.
Mr. Gillian, I didn't want to overlook you, you and your leadership, so I apologize for that.
Well, these guys have been great. I mean, we meet weekly to set our agenda for the week. Every Monday, we do a couple hours, and we've been really doing quite some planning for next year already. We had a curriculum coordinator's retreat today. It was in my office, not really a retreat, but most of the day we spent together. So, it's, you know, you need boots on the ground, it's, you can't, we're a pretty lean organization, as you guys know, and over the years, we've been really lean, you know, and you need, you need folks that can continue to assist teachers, because we have good teachers, we have folks that work really hard, and, you know, we have principals who are educational leaders, but they get tied up, too, with the day-to-day running schools, and we have some really big schools and better support for them. But the more that we can support teachers in their craft and honing those skills and challenging kids and having high expectations, the more we can help them and assist them to better do that, the better results we'll have for our kids in North Andover. And I'd say that, you know, I, I've always been part of a team, and, you know, being assistant superintendent, it's been great working with Hutch and Jim, but adding these guys, it's, I feel like we've got our own little sub-team here that's branched out to really do some wonderful things with principals, but really impact classrooms more than we've ever been able to do. And on a note, we really appreciate the school committee and the parents saying, okay, you can have this time, because that time, as I think someone mentioned before, if it's not by design, it's really tough to happen, and that's where people are getting subs for this day, or, you, you know, as a principal, depending on your school, and every school's unique. You know, you get the sergeant school with, I don't know, 600 kids or close to it, you get the Thompson School with 325, you know, there's all challenges, the schools are very unique, but to find that time in the day was really, you know, you had to beg, borrow, and steal to get the grade-two teachers together. So, the frequency and the purpose and the agendas were more difficult. So, when you design it, although an hour might not seem like a lot to a lot of regular folks, to us as educators, an hour is wonderful. It, it's a wonderful amount of time to be able to get in and look at student work, and the ability to take the faculty meetings, 10 of them, or 11 of them, whatever it was, this year, I think it was 11, to be able to double up those days, to have two-hour blocks, and use that as district time, so we could get together as a district, when it was the one-hour, schools could meet with their own school-based teams, that makes a huge difference. And I commend both of them on the job they've done this year, but particularly, it'll be sad to see Mary go, but I, I think it's, after 40 years of being in education.
Thirty-nine?
Twenty, twenty. You know, it, it's, it's really a testament to the work she's done this year to help set this stage where now Lorene can come in, and, you know, we're just going to hit the ground running, me, Lorene, and Kara, Jen, Jim, and the principals, because new positions are very difficult in any school organization, because you've run without them for so long, and this year has been, it's made all the difference, and it's made my life a lot better, so.
Boy, we appreciate it.
And the principals and the teachers.
So, thank you, Mrs. Gregmar, and I'm happy to hear you bring up about reviewing this year and planning for next year. So, maybe, maybe not tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, could you maybe share with us the pilots, because, you know, I love literacy, too, and I'd love to know a little bit about the pilots that were run this year and what that means in terms of planning for next year? Would be great.
Okay. Would it be helpful if I just gave a quick overview of P1 and PP1 and PP2? Because I think you also want to, Mike is coming with the tech plan, I think you've been looking forward to. So, if I can quickly review for.
Yeah.
All right. PP1, PP stands for professional practice, it's one of those categories in the, the teacher evaluation rubric. PP1 really is about, okay, we were talking about the quality of assessments in EM1, we're talking about just getting the assessments, organizing them, and looking at the data in PP1. So, you'll see informations there about establishing common assessment calendars, collecting the data, organizing teachers to look at the data. So, that's the focus of this. So, the type of information you're going to see in here are some pieces, for instance, here's one that some teachers sat down, facilitated by a certain teacher, this is what they looked at, this is what they set for the goal, that, that type of thing. So, that's the type of evidence you'll see in here. PP2 is simply around, more focused on the professional development and the coordination of the professional development, both at the school level, but at the district level, especially, is it up there? All right, especially the use of our facilitators of collaborative inquiry, and I know there's been a lot of discussion within our group around that. That's also been a very influential group of teachers. We're looking to expand that insofar as also offer training courses to teachers that are not facilitators, but simply that want to learn to facilitate better and looking, being able, what we call looking at student prac, looking at student work. So, that's what is in there. And so, you're going to find what's in there, some, some schedules, you can see, you know, when they, what do they do? There's one, for instance, the science department agendas for the, for the year, what they were doing, et cetera. It also has some evaluations as far as reflections on the courses by the facilitators, how, how they find it useful and that type of thing. So, that is all of PP2. You can see they're all connected. And then, we also have the tech plan, which we, curriculum resources, this is what the, we, CR, and we put the tech plan under that. So, I, I, you know, we've been putting Mike off maybe way too long, but he does have a tech plan that he and a group of people have worked on. Mr. Limpert has been one of them, that's been involved in this committee over, over parts of this year. The state has, again, some phenomenal resources that somehow are hidden, you've got to search them out sometimes, and the state has a resource regarding this that Mike has used and made a lot of sense of. And so, what he's going to do is present the plan as far as the categories of what the state is looking for in a strategic technology plan, and that's going to be his focus. He also has one of these templates filled in as an action plan, but he's going to be focusing on more about presenting it through a PowerPoint here, the different categories of what are found in a plan, and what's been accomplished so far, and where he's heading. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. So, this is the, the same template that the PP1 and, and the other action plans were, were put on. So, this is the CR1, and I'm not going to spend time in interest of, in the interest of time going over this particular action plan, because a lot of the information is going to be in the, I only have about 10 slides, shouldn't take that long to go through, and then I'll show you the other resources that are added to it. So, the tech plan has been a work in progress for a little over a year. I've struggled with it numerous times, partly because I think it's, it's one of those things where it's, it's never going to be finished. The minute you go back to look at it again, something else has changed, and we've already, we've already either done that or we're doing something different. So, it's one of those things that's going to be evolving over time. It does include six benchmarks, commitment and clear vision, implement, implementation strategies, technology integration, literacy, professional development, accessibility, virtual learning and communication, and safety, security, and data retention. So, each, each one of these we'll just quickly go through. The clear vision, this is a, a paragraph we put in the tech plan, and I'll just read it. It basically says, "The North Andover Schools believe that the use of technology is critical to enhancing teaching and learning. Thriving in this world will not only require mastery of essential content-based skills, but also the ability to think critically and solve problems, communicate and collaborate effectively with others, and be creative, innovative, and entrepreneurial." So, I think that kind of sums up very, very succinctly what, what we believe in. My philosophy is, in order to implement any, any hardware or software implementation, it has to be simple, cost-effective, and sustainable. The image to the right is actually one of our schools. It's not a good example of a good implementation, and it's also a good representation of, of kind of what I've kind of walked into it about a year and a half ago, trying to unravel and, and filter through some kind of messy things that was, that just, I think, over time got built on, and, and nobody ever really took the time to, to clean out the old stuff, they just kept, kind of kept adding new stuff to it. And, and I've spent the last year basically unraveling and, and cleaning up and trying to maintain and create a system that is simple. So, if, if, if my, if I were to leave and somebody else were to come into this position, they would able, they would be able to walk in and know what's going on, be able to easily jump in and, and make any changes, updates, and everything's pretty clean and, and up to date. Everything that I look at, I'm looking through a, a budget lens, just because of the, the nature of the, the system right now is, the budget is pretty thin. So, everything we look, we're looking at, we're looking at with, trying to be as cost-effective as possible. So, Google, Google for Education is a no-brainer. It's free, and it's, it's had tremendous impact on, I think, the district and teachers as well. Actually, the town hired a new IT director, and they're looking, seriously looking at moving down that road as well on the town side. So, they may be experiencing similar issues that we ran into, and I think both of the new IT director on the town side and myself can work well together and, and working through any of those issues. And it has to be sustainable. You implement something, you need to be able to sustain that implementation over a long period of time. Some districts have just thrown money at, at BYOD, they've bought hundreds of laptops, and then they realize, well, we, we can't just do that once, we have to do this on a continuous basis, year after year after year, and, and then they realize they may not have the money to sustain that. So, speaking of budget, what I've used to, to look at and frame this plan is, one of the tools is called a star chart, and it's the School Technology and Readiness Chart, and it's, it's a, it's a nationwide benchmark that, it's a rubric that measures on four, four levels where districts are in different categories. So, it's early tech, developing tech, proficient tech, and advanced tech. The blue bars, the large blue bars is where we are, and FY15, I think, are, we're at about $133 per student is what our budget that we've spent on technology. We're under the early tech benchmark, so our goal is to kind of move towards that developing tech. And when you're looking at the star chart, and I'll actually jump to it just so you can see what it looks like, the star chart is, is a rubric that has all of these benchmarks, early tech, developing, proficient, and advanced, and I rated all of these where we are. In gray is where we, we are. The colored ones are related to other areas that we focused on, and then I've tied it to other things. So, so anything that's colored or highlighted is where we are on that, on that star chart. So, the majority of the rubri, in the majority of the rubric, we're in the either early tech or developing tech, until we get down to the areas down here, which is the infrastructure and technology, where we are actually very strong in our infrastructure. So, we, we actually have a very solid infrastructure. It's just that we need to work on adding devices to that infrastructure so that students can use them, and, and teachers as well. So, the budget is important because if the budget is in the early tech, then there's really no, it's very difficult to get into the developing tech in that other categories without the proper, without a proper budget. So, looking at that down the road, we need to look at more creative ways to, to try to get money for those programs in order to move into those other, other areas. I'm going to jump back to that. So, that's where I got these, this framework. So, some districts in Massachusetts are spending $400 to $500 per student on technology. Hopkinton is one, I think they, they spend 1.7 million a year on technology, and they're in the, the 450 range. So, there are many districts that are spending that, and there's many that, that are spending less than us. So, we're, we're not at the very, very bottom, but we're kind of towards the bottom as far as the per, per pupil spending. Oops, sorry about that. Technology integration, literacy. Basically, right now, all teachers are on a common platform, and I think for the first time ever, every teacher has the same, for the most part, same laptop, running the same operating system, using a common Wi-Fi network that is fairly robust, and our network and our internet bandwidth is fairly sufficient. Last year, we were at 50 megabits per second, we're at 500 megabits per second right this year, and we're looking at moving over the summer to 650, at no cost. All staff are using Google for Education. We're moving things away from having internal servers to more. We're moving things away from having internal servers to more cloud-based or SaaS, Software as a Service, which makes things a little bit more efficient. I'd like to see about shifting away from smart board technology. A lot of districts that jumped on that are moving away from smart boards. They've found that the smart boards are expensive, they, they're expensive to maintain, they do break, and you have to replace them. And in our district, in order, if we were to, and equity is that other issue that we need to look at. There are very few classrooms at the elementary that have smart boards. If we were to outfit everybody with new smart boards, we'd look in at a couple million-dollar investment just in smart boards. And then that's not just a single-year investment, that's the training and the PD and the, and if you think about it, the smart board, all it does is it gives a more advanced tool for the teacher to be, to do the same thing that they've always done, which is standing at the front of the classroom and presenting material, rather than having a student-centered classroom where students are working as, as groups and more collaborative. It, it's, it's, it's kind of the bells and whistles where you're not getting the, the benefit, I think, that you would get from other technology, and you're not getting the bang for your buck that you would get if you put that money somewhere else. So I just, I don't see that as something we can sustain, and I would look at, at moving away from that. We still need a lot of PD in all areas. In order to give the PD or provide PD, we need to have time, which we did have, we used some of the time that was available after school with, when the teachers were collaborating. I know Kara and Mary, we worked together and provided PD in some areas with Google, Google Plus, and that, I thought, went pretty well.
The reviews were great in the documents.
They went well? Good reviews?
According to what they said in the surveys, I mean, they were very complimentary, so.
And technology integration specialists. In 2002, 2003, we had three of them in the district. We currently have zero, and we're looking at trying to add more technology specialists. The reason we need those is because we don't have all the time after school that we can do in large groups, and what they would do is be able to work with individual teachers, groups of teachers, and help them in the classroom without having to pull them out or having to, to waste time. They can work with the teachers and, and help them. Right now, we're using our tech analysts that are, they're to repair computers, and they've taken over that role, which if, when you, when you take them, I'll go back to that other picture very quickly here. When you take them out of that role of repairing computers and maintaining the network, you end up with a situation like this where we spread our staff very, very thin, they're not able to maintain the hardware and the, the network in the manner that it probably should be maintained. So it's, it's kind of a catch-22. They do a great job at, at the PD in the, in the classroom, but it kind of gets lost and, and they, they're not able to do some of the other things that need to get done. This is just another chart of the technology integration specialist. Currently, we have zero. 2015. In FY16, we're looking at adding a halftime position. That halftime position, we've already posted, and the way we're doing that is we are taking money that special ed is spending on technology assessments for assistive tech, and they're spending upwards of $40,000 on just consulting fees. So we're going to use that money to hire a halftime person to do all of those consulting and all of that, all of those assistive tech evals in-house, which is not going to take up all of that person's time. That person would also be a, a technology integration specialist that could then help all teachers rather than just the assistive tech. So that person would be responsible for doing the eval, the tech evals, working with the staff, working with the teachers, the students and the parents, and implementing those recommendations. And then it would also take a little pressure off of our staff, and then they could do other things. So it, it's kind of a win-win, and it's revenue-neutral, there's no increase in cost. And I, I've, in FY17 and FY18, I've added one and then another position to try to see if we can move forward in those, to add another technology specialist. Little wishful thinking there.
Yeah, there you go.
Professional development, so this is, goes back to what I was just saying, IT support units called upon to provide PD in the use of technology in the classroom. The additional staff, it will prevent staff from performing other important tasks such as maintaining our, our network infrastructure. Accessibility. We're currently at about a five-to-one student-computer ratio. We're looking at adding Chromebooks at the elementary schools, which would bring fast, reliable devices to the classroom as well as provide the ability to satisfy future state testing requirements. So adding those, the, the vote that you guys had made to add the $75,000 or approximately that much money to purchase the Chromebooks for the elementary will go a long way at raising the, the number of devices at the elementary level and allowing them and the staff to use that. I, I see the upper grades using it more, but then the lower grades could also use, use those devices. We're also looking, there's lots of changes taking place over the summer with Google and with devices that are coming out. There are tab, there are Chromebooks that are now dual devices, they're a tablet as well as a Chromebook, with touchscreens that are fairly reasonable, they're coming out this summer. So I'm looking at, I'm holding off on buying those and, and seeing what's coming out because there's a lot of things happening in that area, which I'm very excited about, and there's a lot of possibilities that can take place next year. So I'm still trying to figure out the best way to spend that $75,000, and, and we're still trying to see what's coming out and what's, what's available. BYOD pilots at the high school and the middle school, we're looking at starting that in the fall, and we need to do some PD with staff in using the devices in the classroom, and there's going to be some more discussion, and I'll, I'll work with Kara, and, well, Mary's going to be gone, but, Lorraine, on ways that we can get the teachers, the PD to the staff, and also making sure that they understand how to use those devices in the classroom, what they could be used for, and giving them those, those tools. Internet network, these are two very deceiving graphs. The state has come out with a draft report called the Next Generation Classroom, and if you look at the left chart, this, the latest external bandwidth recommendations that the state is coming out with is kind of ridiculous, if you ask me. They're recommending one gig, one gigabit per second per 1,000 students. We have approximately 5,000 students, so you're talking five gigabits connection, which is a, it, it translates to about 40,000 megabits, and right now, this, you can't see it on the graph, but that's where we were last year at 50. So going from 50,000 to 40,000 is a huge jump. Even going from 500 to 40,000 is a huge jump. So I don't know of anybody or any university or anybody that's at that level, but it just points, it just, it highlights to us what direction the state is pushing schools in. And actually, the E-rate is actually pushing in that direction as well. The E-rate is phasing out the telecommunication funds that they're providing schools, and they're putting more of the money on the hardware and infrastructure. So we're actually, this summer, we were approved for 40% reimbursement through the E-rate. So if we spend $100,000, which is what's been budgeted for the capital improvement, then we, we could get an additional $40,000 worth of equipment through the E-rate program. So we're, we're in actually fairly good shape. Districts like, other districts have a much higher level of reimbursement, like 80, 90%. We're, we're at the low end of 40%. So, but it's still 40,000 is not something to, to sneeze at.
So Mike, what's the, the, there's obviously a huge disconnect between this and the state. How do we get it through the, the bureaucrats down in Malden, wherever they're located these days? I mean, how do we, how do we let them know that this is not even reasonable?
I don't know. I, because, because what we're spending right now for, for the 500 megabits per second connection is about $24,000 a year. So you, you extrapolate that to 40,000 megabits per second, and you're talking astronomical costs.
This is a very, a, a, a big generalization, but I mean, I'm sure this happens not just here, but in other parts, too. You know, we need to have some, and, and, you know, I'm obviously a former state legislator, but this is the kind of stuff I've never really gunned the weeds like this, about that. But I mean, we should have some kind of mechanism to either write our, our legislators, we have four of them, to say, hey, listen, you know, the state's way off base on this. You know, we should send them a letter saying, you know, if no one's even close to this, this is maybe just a huge example. I'm sure there's other, other things that we could pile on that.
And, and I put this as an example, it's kind of a ridiculous example, but it, I think what they're saying is the Next Generation Classroom, we need to prepare for, if every student has a device, if every student is connecting at the same time, if they're using YouTube, if they're going to Khan Academy, if they're accessing video, and.
What this many parts of the state doesn't even have broadband. I mean, I, I have a lot of colleagues from, from Western Mass, who says, we don't have broadband, how can they even get to this point?
Right.
You know?
What's the State House operator?
They don't have Wi-Fi. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, certainly not at that rate.
Our internal infrastructure, this is a project that we're working on this summer. Currently, we're at, we have one gig connection between all of our buildings and the town hall, actually, two gigs, we have two 1-gig fiber channels. So we're up, upping that to 10-gig fiber channels, so 20 gigs per connection. We're doing that at the high school, the middle school, and town hall. So those three locations will have very fast connection internally within our network. So whether it's video, video surveillance, if we have, because if we add cameras to the system, then that needs, that's going to eat up bandwidth. So all of that is going to require additional internal bandwidth. And again, the state's recommending up here, and actually, again, our, our internal infrastructure is pretty solid, so this is not that far off, but it's still, it's still a big, big disconnect, but not as bad as, not as bad as this one.
Interesting.
The last couple of slides, let's go very quickly. Virtual learning, Google for Education, and Edge Annuity are two areas that we use for collaboration, and Edge Annuity is a program that's used in our Scarlet Net Academy as well as our day program, where they can access online content and take courses online. Communication, district website, Power School, School Messenger, Neil Magic, Google for Education, Formstack, Survey Monkey, Freshdesk. These are all Software as a Service systems that we use to communicate with parents, communicate amongst ourselves, send out information. We're looking at redoing the district website this summer. We're looking at using Google Sites for that, for that website, and I started, I started a, a template and threw a couple pages up there to see if it was doable, excuse me, see if it was doable, and it is. A number of schools use Google Sites for our, for the website, and again, it's free, so we would not have to pay CMS for schools for that, so we'd save some money. And lastly, safety, security, and data retention. We do have firewall content filtering, acceptable use policy, and we use Google Vault, which is free from Google. They were charging, but they've decided to give it to free educators. And what Google Vault does is it backs up all of our email, all of our documents that are in Drive, and any hangouts like chat sessions that are online, so students, if they're chatting, and actually, students don't have hangouts, but if teachers are using chat or Gmail, all of that is archived and backed up, and if something were to happen, we could recover all of that data or information. So that's, that's that. And then lastly, I put a website together that I, that's, the, the link is at the bottom of your, of that tech plan. But basically, it's a website that includes all of the, the dashboards, so those charts that I had done, these are all live. So when I update our spreadsheets and our web, on our data, it updates the charts. So if we change something or add something, these get updated on, on an automatic basis. So you can go and look and see if anything's changed. It is interactive, so when you hover over it, it tells you the exact number. So FY15 is $133.42 per student is what we're spending. So these are all just dashboards that are, that are, that are available to you. And then as well, the actual tech plan is, is here, that you can go on and, and look at online, and go through. The star chart that I showed you earlier is here with all of the benchmarks for each of the areas. The goals and the action plan, this is, this is where the color coding comes in. So over here, these are the goals and the, and the, and the actual budget numbers that I'm looking at for each year, but they're all color-coded here on the, on the right with the, either the benchmark and the star chart, or in the DESI guidelines, which is another, another tool that the state puts out that we can, can go by. So that's all the data, the background data that's kind of used to create the tech plan, but those documents are all live documents that I, I look at on a regular basis, and we update and change. So once I update it, it automatically updates on the website, and you guys have access to that website. And eventually, anybody in the district will have access to that. And the, the website name is techplan@nak12.com. So I purchased the nak12 to be able to add subdomains so that we can get short links to different important pages. So one example is Beta. So I created the Beta site for the, the North End Public School website. So you could do a staff directory, and you can filter through the staff directory if you wanted to do by last name, and it pulls up the person's name and, and email, or you can filter it by departments, so say, grade one, so all the grade one teachers. So there's, and then also documents, it's an easy way to sort through documents, use it, this is all through Google. So if I were to go to the high school, I would have access to this, the handbook, the Program of Studies, employment permits, prom guest contract, these are all just sample documents that I threw up there. But, but all of these you can just put up there very easily, and if you update this, if you update the form, it updates it on the website. You don't have to do any uploading, downloading, it's all hosted for free, we have unlimited storage on Google, so we can just put as much as we want up there. You can put videos, anything. So it's a, Google, Google Sites is actually a pretty easy system to use. Here's the school committee page. So the members over here, so the way I'm going to set it up is everything's kind of going to be in the same place, so when people go to a page, everything's located in the same place, no matter what school they go to. They can have news articles, Twitter accounts, they can put anything up there, calendars, anything they want. So it's just, so the calendar, and it's all updated constantly.
Well, that's awesome.
So, so that website right there is, well, the other one, the tech plan, you have access, you can go through, and if you have questions, you can ask, and, and just let me know.
Okay.
But again, I don't want to take up too much time.
Thanks, Mike.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
I think you see what, how productive Mike's been in a year and a half.
You really.
As far as leading the district in the right direction, I think it can't be denied. And with the new tech director for the town, they're very much in sync with the way they're thinking.
Tell me his name again, I forget it.
Chris McClure.
Chris McClure, right.
Yeah, he came from Hop, Hopkinton.
Yeah.
And I think he was in Westford at one point, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Did we get the tech plan today? Why don't I?
It was included in the, I believe, the attachments that Bev sent out. There were four attachments.
They're massive.
They're huge.
Okay. Is, in the tech plan, is there someplace that's identified where a technology curriculum is going to be implemented? Or some type of?
Yeah.
What was the question?
I was just wondering if, in the plan, if there's, at some point, when there's going to be a technology skills type of continuum developed.
Yes, I mean, that's something we'll be working on this summer, so that's part of, part of that whole plan, because at the elementary level, and it's pretty standard for most places where it's not so much a curriculum for technology, but a skill set that students, by the end of first grade, they should all be able to log into a website or create an account or whatever the skills happen to be, they're pretty, pretty basic, and then they, they accelerate over time. So yes, that set of skills will be developed K through five, and then as well as six through 12. I mean, they, and I'm looking, I would love to see about pushing in the high school, because at the middle school, they do a lot of Google Docs, and then they do it again at the high school. So at the high school, I'd like to see about pushing more programming and more technical type of classes than, than just like a, an office or Word-type class. So I'd like to try to push that envelope a little bit and improve that. But yes, there's a curriculum that, that we're working on this summer.
And then will there be elementary teachers involved in that process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we'll be working with Kara and Lorraine.
Thanks.
Yep.
You have anything else to ask them?
No.
No?
No.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you very much. It was exciting. I know it's late, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, we'll jump out to 10B, which is the second reading and approval of the CREST amended Articles of Agreement. And if I can paraphrase that quickly for us, it was the inclusion of Drakot and Triton. And there was also some verbiage in the wording in my document. It's page 11 of theirs, but it had to do with districts who are awaiting final approval. Approval could be in as associate members without voting rights.
But would get a small discount.
But, and I was just going to say, and get a discount in their tuition. So, I don't know, Ms. Limper, if you have anything else to add?
Nope, that's it. Those are the only.
Crest representatives?
No, and so, if we can vote tonight, then you can sign as the chair and we'll forward it back to the.
Perfect. Any other?
No, that's it.
All right, so I would entertain a motion if somebody.
Move to approve as presented the amended CREST Articles of Agreement.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion?
So, I just had a question about G, the piece that was added about the tuition. Is there any reason to not move that?
No. There isn't. It's a, it's by, it's by way of, you know, they want to get districts to join, right?
Okay.
Sort of economies of scale, and this is a way to try to do that.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounded like four to nothing. Looks like we covered 10C, which was the overnight trips. We will jump on to 10D, which is the second reading and approval of the student handbooks. So, I don't know if there's any additional questions or concerns. We got them under separate packet last year. I'm sorry, last, last two weeks ago. It feels like last year. Last meeting.
We also got the elementary one?
Yes, you did.
Yes.
See, this is something we, we just, I think you and I are sort of behind the power curve on this. Bev is not sending them out. She's giving links to Drive. So, if you don't realize, in that email, there's a link that you have to follow.
Okay. Well, I think we didn't get the, we didn't get the elementary handbook before the last meeting, I believe.
But I think.
I, I think we've since gotten it.
Okay.
It hasn't been, it's right, it's distributed by link.
But it's by link, yeah.
Not by attachment.
Okay.
Some of them just are too large.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's fine. I, I don't know if there's some way to, it's, there's a lot, like, we've been getting a lot of emails just in general lately, and I think it's, if there's some way to kind of, I don't know if we can group it in the Drives, like, where we can have some of these documents put together. It's just, it's hard to go back through all the emails and find everything.
Yep.
They'll also be helpful, you know, some of the stuff Bev just prints out for us. Stuff to, you know, you can read it online so big. You know, I got through some of it, but.
Yeah, no, it's.
It was pretty massive.
Yeah.
I mean, I know she's sending them out as quickly as she can. It's just, I think sometimes it's hard to manage all of the pieces coming in.
I, I think one thing, and it, you know, I know that Mike has just left, but, you know, hopefully, there'll be a short shared Drive that we, you know, can, can almost be, you know, our, everything kind of for the meeting is in there, and then you kind of have one place to go. And I think, you know,
Yes.
as we all travel and kind of do different stuff in our days, just knowing that we can hit one spot and kind of go from there maybe.
Yeah, that would be great. That'd be very helpful.
Actually, that would be an even better solution, because then we, we could just go to that folder for the meeting.
Right.
And in there, it could be whatever she wants to put in there.
That would be wonderful.
She wouldn't even have to send us an email. We could just know where to go look.
Okay.
It won't be difficult. We already, I, that's what I do for the meetings, is I have a folder of everything on the agenda, everything we're going to present.
Okay. I mean, I store it on my hard drive that way, but, you know, because we, I don't always know we've got connection. Or in town hall, or, okay. All right, so is there?
Move to approve as presented the policy administrative core of the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Say aye. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't get a chance to read the elementary book, so I'm going to.
Okay, so are you abstaining, or?
Abstaining.
Okay, so that'll be a 301. Okay. Perfect. Mr. Mealy, I believe you are up with fiscal '15 budget status update.
The, really, our kind of last projection of where we're going to end up. This is the sheet we've been working off of for the last few updates. So, it hasn't changed a lot. This is what was presented to the town manager prior to town meeting. If you recall, at the last meeting, we still weren't sure what the process was going to be. What it ended up being was that the town manager needed to get approval from the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen to transfer funds from FY15 other accounts to meet both our deficit and the town snow and ice deficit. So, ours ended up at 391, 450. Their snow and ice, I'm pretty sure it stayed at this amount, was 906, 609. So, that did occur. And now, the only kind of glitch in that was that, not being aware of the process, I was remiss in not notifying the FinCom that this was going on. So, they had some questions. They did approve it. Board of Selectmen approved it, so it's taking place. But I've talked to Bill Callahan, the chair of the FinCom, and he's going to try to see if they want to have a meeting in June, and I'll go to the FinCom and answer any questions they might have regarding this. We certainly have been talking about this in public, but I just hadn't anticipated that it was going to require, that that was the mechanism. So, going forward, what I've also told Bill is, when I provide a budget update to the school committee, following that meeting, I'll just forward it to FinCom, and they'll have it. So, that'll take place. The other thing, and what I will review with them, because a big concern seems to be, well, what's next year going to look like? So, I've added to this sheet that I presented last time as well. You can see the historical costs, and I went as far as FY15 showing just how bad this year was with regards to an increase in out-of-district tuitions, where, you know, we, the worst year prior to that was a 10 and 1/2 percent increase. This was 25, which was why we couldn't sustain it internally. But going into next year, our budget contains $5.84 million for these costs. And right now, with graduates and aging-out students, we're at $5.5 million in projected costs. So, we're starting ahead by $344,000. And we continue to try to tweak where we can the budget. If, you know, we don't need a para, or if in the enrollment projections, we need one less kindergarten class, that would save another $54,000. And we'll just continue to try to build our contingency going into the start of the year, and we should be fine.
We, we'll get turnover savings from nurses, right?
Well, there's that. There's two, a couple of nurses.
You just jinxed this.
That's usually my line.
So, I mean, clearly, this was, this year, it was a significant impact.
You can, yeah, and this really, I think, illustrates it better than anything else, where you can see the annual change. And even some years, we've seen pretty significant savings and, you know, drop in that expense. But, yeah, 25 percent.
Right.
Was just.
Right.
Have we, I mean, and I'm sure they have, but have we done any sort of analysis of, are there particular programs or types of services that maybe haven't worked out as well as we anticipated? Or can we potentially revitalize programs? And we've taught, you know, one of the goals is to keep families and children within the community. Are there opportunities here, potentially going forward in the future, to, to do that and provide good services for the students?
Yeah, we're always looking for those opportunities. You know, when Mike talked about the technology, the assistant technology evaluations that take place, and that instead of spending $40,000, we could actually hire a half-time employee to get those done and additional work. When we look at OT and PT, those are services we contract out for, and we're very close to the point where it would make more sense to hire somebody than to contract out. So, we're always looking for those opportunities. As far as programs that haven't worked, I don't, I don't think we've got any of those. The programs we've put in place have worked well. And what we call cost avoidance, you know, best example I've given is the TOP program that we're in with Andover, where it's probably been about a million dollars that we've avoided in out-of-district tuition by having that in place. And it's only costing us, you know, less than $100,000 a year.
Right.
So, it, it, you know, when you look at the programs, it's, the break-even point comes quick. If you just have sometimes two but three students, it makes more sense, if you can do it well, to do it in district. But we're always looking for those opportunities.
Okay, thanks.
Can you just refresh my memory real quick? Fiscal year '12, I mean, we had roughly a 10% decrease. Was there anything significant about that? I mean, that's really our only decline. Was that the year we started the TOPS program?
It's very cyclical. It is, but it's also very cyclical in the number of graduates and students aging out. And so, that was the year where we, what ended up happening was, we had a good number of students who were finishing up, but we didn't add a lot that year.
Okay.
Yep.
Any additional questions for Mr. Mealy? All right. So, I believe we've covered 11A, B, and C, and we will jump to 11D, which is the first reading of revisions to the Personnel Handbook. I'm just trying to catch up here. There's a significant amount of redlining that's in here, so.
May I suggest something?
Sure.
There's a lot of, and Deb Artain has been working on this over the years, I would say, to try to update it. And if you have the, I mean, there's so much, you can't really just sit and do a PowerPoint. But if you have questions on anything, suggest, send them to Bev, and she could
Okay.
facilitate getting the answers from Deb. And I commend Deb on her ability to do this while juggling all sorts of other things. But it's really important that this, a lot of these changes be made and put in place. Most of this, she's, and she's already doing this, it's just about getting it under one package.
Okay. Any questions that anybody has right now? All right. We have covered 11E. 11F, Superintendent Evaluation Discussion.
I'm going to make it simple for you.
Oh, you have the cheat sheet.
I only have 20 pages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
All right.
Yeah, Mike does a great job with that presentation, but his concept of time was not really.
Yeah.
He said very short.
Very short, yeah.
Maybe that was Greg Gilligan short.
This, this is basically, this is about simply the process, all right? That's what I'm going to, that's what I'm giving you tonight, this handout, all right? So, the process for a superintendent end-of-cycle goes like this, all right? I will submit to you the report by June 3rd. All right, that's Wednesday of next week. All right, so you receive that via email, all right? In that, I go over progress towards goal performance on the standards, overall rating, and impact on student learning, all right? And I connect it to, through a story and data. A lot of the data's in here. I'll, I'll try to reference as much data as possible, but I don't want to create a huge document, all right? Then, the school committee prepares the end of, based on what I'm giving you, as far as evidence is concerned, you do to the best of your ability the end-of-cycle evaluation report by June 10th, all right? And you email that to the school committee chair. So, you individually rate and email to the school committee chair. That's all of number two, all right? Number three, the school committee chair now takes all your individual information, all right? And will, prepares a single summative evaluation, which he then sends to you by June 15th. All right? And then, on June 18th, your last meeting of the year, my last meeting, you, you vote on to accept, you discuss it and vote on to this, accept it or accept it with any amendments or adjustments you might want to do. It's, it's as simple as that.
Okay.
You've been through it twice.
Yep.
It gets better every time.
So, you.
Some of you have been through it twice, sorry.
You haven't, but if you want to, there may be stuff you want to
Oh.
kind of abstain on it.
Dave's never received.
Well, my point, this is your, your evaluation.
Yep.
And you're leaving.
Yep.
So.
You're a practical person.
Something good to discuss, Anna.
Probably put about 40 to 60 hours' worth of
Time and effort.
Effort into it. But when we get it, if you have questions, we can sit down.
Absolutely.
And what we can send you, I mean, I, I've done an initial, what I laid out at the beginning of the year, the final connects with, and it's in a format that connects with the final one. But I know you've never seen that. I forgot.
So, maybe we can just send that.
Yep.
And then you can, I'm sure, take a look at it.
Guess I can't get this one out.
Okay. All right. Sorry, 11G, I believe we have covered. 11H is just a revision to Policy DFG. And this came about really because now that we are kind of finishing our first year of full-day kindergarten being kind of in existence and kind of funded, there's no accounting modifications that are kind of needed to track payments with any of that. So, did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Mealy?
Correct.
Okay.
We're essentially removing it from the revolving fund, if you will.
Yeah, we've eliminated that revolving account.
Right.
Well, there is information that was connected with preschool, so.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, no, I. Taking the kindergarten out.
I got that.
So, we'll vote on that next week if there's no other comments. All right. So, we have covered our agenda except for public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
This should be on record.
Can I just ask something real quick?
Yes.
Can I just request, when we get, like, these big packets and things, can we get them? And I know a lot of us are just getting it together, but if we don't get a couple of days to review it, like, some of them are just so big. I just.
Agreed.
Because I've been at, I mean, like, I was at work all day yesterday and today. I just don't have the time to then get to it, and I want to come prepared. So, if, in the future, if we can't get it advanced, because it's just not ready, maybe we can just put it to the next meeting, because it just makes it difficult.
Okay.
Thanks. And I know everyone's working hard, it's just sometimes the timing doesn't work out.
Okay.
Kristy Hale, 45, Lacey. I had sent Mr. McDevitt a proposal for the Stevens Summer Library Program to be considered by a school committee. It really doesn't impact anyone, except that the summer program that they do for the younger kids, they incorporate a bingo game and a chance to kind of win prizes, all to encourage reading. I'm a fervent supporter of the public library and the elementary library. I've been very involved over the years. Reading is something that I consider very critical and foundational to our kids. So, anything I can do to support it is what my goal is. I took an idea to Kathleen Keenan, the current library director at Stevens, to, in addition to the summer program that they do, to build on that and offer a chance for the kids across town to work collectively to achieve a goal of a million minutes of reading for the summer, which works out to be about 15 minutes per day for about 75% of our elementary ed population. So, all I'm looking for from school committee is for you guys to consider letting us put your name on the copy that will go home, saying that you are supportive of children reading for the summer. So, it would basically be sponsored by the elementary PTOs, school committee, Friends of the Stevens Library. So, that's the first thing. You can think about it, but you have to think quickly, because they're putting the brochures together, so. And I'm happy to send that copy out to everybody. It's a very simple thing, going with their summer reading theme of being heroes. I think I just sent it to you last night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't forward it to anybody.
It was more of just a, like, heads up.
Yeah, I didn't know you were asking for permission tonight.
Yeah, no, I, well, I can't put anybody's name on it specifically unless, you know, people agree that they want to do it.
All right, that's my mistake. I didn't realize you were.
No worries.
Okay.
So, sorry. So, it's just.
So, if you like reading, you should say yes. If you don't like reading, say no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kind of.
That is.
On what side you fall on here?
I think it's a great opportunity for the students, like, the elementary students in the town to work together towards a common goal, so I think that's. I think it's a great opportunity for the students, like, the elementary students in the town, to work together towards a common goal, so I think that's.
As an example, at Sargent for Read Across America this year, our assistant principal, Karen Leahy, worked with Andrea Tepperman, one of our first grade teachers, and it was Read Across America, and they literally, for each book that was read, counted as a mile to get across the country. And so there was a giant map placed up in Calzada Hall at Sargent, and the kids got to see this progression for the month of how many books were being read, and it was by both students and families. So you could turn in your ticket. Kids were very excited about making sure that parents were reading books to help turn in these tickets. So this really is just more geared toward the kids, of really encouraging it. It gives them the chance to turn a ticket in each week, and hopefully get them into the library to be checking more books out, which helps circulation at the library. It also helps get kids there for the program that already takes place on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that the friends support. It's just, there's really no negative to this, since we tried to get the kids to read anyway, and this is sort of a common goal of coming together and really trying to do something together as a town.
When do you need to know by?
I think Kathleen said they're trying to finalize the brochure, like, in the next week.
It's a trifold?
No, they already did that, because that's the school. This is completely separate. This is not school-related at all, which is why I'm coming in this avenue to bring it up, because.
Because we just approved a trifold to go home yesterday.
That's through the elementary librarian, and the list was helped develop by Marina at Stevens, but it's not specifically the summer reading program that they're doing that covers, where they bring in the performers on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
It had a few other things.
Had a couple of the things going on.
And we were adding a school list to it as well.
And summer reading is kicking off on June 20th with a local artist that does superhero art, I guess, or hero art, and he's going to be doing it live on stage at the middle school. So this is a really good chance to kind of encourage kids, once again, to, like, really read. So if you guys can think about it and let me know.
Could I make a suggestion? Because I don't think everybody, you may have seen it. Okay, all right. I thought maybe from Sargent, maybe you had.
No, you're, it's not a Sargent thing.
Okay, well, I just, because you're friends, okay.
You can go with that, but no.
All right. And we're all Facebook friends. You know, if we could just distribute that, and maybe if.
Would you mind forwarding it, or do you want me to send it to everybody?
No, I can forward it. I have 13 minutes of battery left, so not tonight.
That's fine, no worries.
But I can forward that out to everybody, and then if we can just take a look at it, and can we kind of say?
If one of you wants to get back to me with, "We're good," that's fine. If you all want to weigh in individually, that's fine, too. Whatever works for you guys.
Why don't I have people, go ahead.
I was going to say, I just wonder if we can do it collectively without having a meeting, but I would say that, you know, I'm comfortable letting you make that determination. We could actually take a vote right now to say we empower the chairman to make the determination to put the school committee's name on it. Because I don't think, I don't think we compice with compromise.
Okay. Does that work?
Yes.
So there's a motion, there's a second?
She moved to second.
Any additional discussion?
No, let's go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, go.
Fantastic. And then I just have a couple of questions.
Which is all out of order tonight.
There's so much order going on.
What else?
Mike had presented that a five-to-one student computer ratio is his goal. So I just want to verify that that would actually mean that there'd be about 100 computers going to Sargent, because right now, it is very equitable, in that every school has pretty much the same number of those small netbooks, which for our student population means we have, like, 50 for 550 kids versus 100 for 550 kids. So I just, I mean, it does.
I do know that the number of elementary units we were purchasing equated to, I think it was three carts, which are 30, so that's 90. So close to the 100 you're talking about for Sargent.
But they are going to be on rolling carts again, is the plan?
What we've talked about was the fact that each school will be able to utilize them as they want. So some might do rolling carts, some might do dedicated rooms.
Because that's been one of the critiques I've heard from teachers over the years at Sargent of why they didn't really get used, is because they were so.
That had come up.
And the carts have changed over years. I mean, some of the, some of the early carts were like.
Well, I know part of it came to where it needed to be locked up, and so there wasn't power available, so things weren't always charged the way they needed to be charged. So it was just kind of a side comment on the utilization of that.
The school was going to get it.
Even the carts seven years ago were like, I mean.
Right.
So we can get back to you with, with those breakdowns and.
That's fine. And then there was a comment made for, that it would be addressed about the bring-your-own-device to NAMs and the high school for next year. And part of the reason I'm inquiring about this is because I'm charged with putting the school supply kits together at the middle school for next year. They're going to go with staples that parents can order through it. And one of the things that is being asked for parents to buy, and has been for years, is a specific calculator in order to use it for seventh-grade math. And if we're moving into the realm of bring-your-own-device, there are a lot of really great scientific apps that can be put on a lot of kids' smartphones, and half of the kids have it, or they have their iPods, that they could install these apps for free, as opposed to having parents go out and buy yet another device. So if it's something that can, I have no idea what the realm is for that discussion, but if it's something that can be looked at.
Information we share with Mike.
Okay. It's just one more thing. The parents are being asked to buy, and as somebody who's been really involved with school supplies, both in the elementary and now moving into the middle school, lots of times, it doesn't seem like a big deal, you know, a $13, $20 calculator. But for some families, it is kind of a big deal, where if their kids already have a device that a free calculator could be used with, it's something that would be nice to be considered. And it doesn't require Wi-Fi or anything, like.
Okay.
Once it's on, it's on.
Right. So maybe you can just give me a call at some point tomorrow, and we can, I can try to get coordinated with Mike and.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the committee?
Oh, I just, one quick one. So we got the stones up the back of the Bradstreet. Stones are saved off the back of the Bradstreet.
Oh, okay.
They will not go in the landfill.
Okay.
They're being stored in a secret location, awaiting the next step. We don't know what that next step is. And thanks to some help from Mr. Mealy, we now have the Johnson High School bell prominently displayed in front of the new administration building. I think that was a very appropriate thing to do. Shows a nice continuity from the, from then to now. And so I think that was a job well done.
It's excellent. Donated in 1867.
Great job. And the plan is to have a plaque that would describe Johnson High School in front of the bell at some point.
Well, interestingly enough, I saw it, but didn't know the story behind it, so that's awesome.
Inside piece.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I will, we started off with executive session. We did not complete it because we had a rather large crowd coming at 7:00. So I would entertain a motion to return to executive session and not to return to open session.
Don't move.
Reluctantly seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are.